Got it. Thank you. Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. I mean, I get, yeah, I'll just call the meeting to order.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, before we go into executive session, Director McClure has a request for verbal authorization that.
Right, yeah. We need to get our grant reports in and billings.
Yes, yes, you do.
Yes. And one component of that is taking a look and apportioning our benefits amongst the various charge numbers to grants and everything. And it's fairly complex. Kirsten has experienced pulling the reports that we need. There are custom reports from the Kianta. So I need her to come, need a little bit of our time to help us with that. So.
She's willing?
She's willing. She'd come in and toward the end of the day, I'm thinking it's, you know, maybe a few days to come in, perhaps 10 hours, maybe a little more. But we need to hire her temporarily in order to get the authorization for her to get.
Oh, in the system, yeah.
I can't put a non-employee in the system and then make, making her a casual employee at limited hours. He's got the money because his position isn't filled yet, so.
Are you going to be able to have current staff looking over her shoulder just in case it might be a training opportunity?
So it's, yeah, so it's sort of a training opportunity as well. I like it.
This is one of the more complex things you've done because.
It'll be very limited casual position.
No brainer. Must be done. Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I'm ready for executive session. Commissioners, are you ready? Okay, we will go into executive session in accordance with RCW 42.30.1404 to discuss collective bargaining negotiations and/or grievance mediation with, in regards to collective bargaining for, how long would you like?
However, long you need.
Whatever you need.
10 minutes and then maybe extend five. I think we have 15 available, so.
Yeah, okay, we will start with 10 minutes.
Would you please ask the folks to sign off?
Yes, if folks on the Zoom meeting, this is the executive session, if I could ask you to sign off, we will be back in 10 minutes. We may extend a couple of minutes more. We are scheduled on the agenda to start with Public Works at 10:15, so I know we'll be back by then.
That's a safe time to come back.
Yeah.
Casey and.
Casey's on.
Okay.
Okay, that will be still watching.
Okay, I'm gonna start removing folks if you don't remove yourselves.
Start clicking. Start the timer here. Once we have everybody off, they'll see a couple.
Yeah, there are. I'm working on it.
Yeah, just.
I don't want to limit anybody permanently. I'm trying to be cautious here.
Drop the recording too and.
That's a good reminder.
First thing I did when I moved in is buy the generator, propane and it comes on and runs and never gets used.
That's nice. I'm gonna do that. I have a portable generator, but I generally don't keep fuel for it in the summer.
Right.
Yeah. I made me rethink that last night.
That's what we want to get to.
I said I bought a big tank and had it plumbed. I mean, total, I probably spent nine grand and I think it came on for half an hour once.
Well, must have come to bring you off last night. You must be fed from the different. All right, whenever you're ready, Gordy.
Are we recording?
Okay. And let people back in.
Yeah, we're unlocked.
All right, just a couple of items on the consent agenda we've been talking about. Item number.
Yes, yes, sir. Thanks for the reminder.
Item number six is a resolution to request a waiver to exceed the maximum road grade for Courtney Road.
Thought we got our approval.
We got our approval.
So what does that mean with their little statement of you're approved, but keep data and if we see, I guess, people crashing and we're having, then it's like, well, what are we gonna do then? That's just them covering their.
Yeah, keep an eye on it.
Keep an eye on it. Okay.
Yeah. We will keep an eye on it.
Yeah, of course.
The next item is item number seven, and that's the award for the shredding for $55 per container. And so as soon as we get this executed and signed off on, they'll bring the containers for us.
What's the size of a container?
65 gallon.
Those are gonna be downstairs in the.
There'll be one downstairs, one in Annex Five.
Oh, it's the pole.
And then Annex One and one in Annex Four.
Oh, good, yeah, that's better. I had, I don't know, I had a mental picture of four of them side by side. Like my garbage cans at home, where I thought, oh, no, that was full. That was full.
To take them to the transportation station.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that should help. It should help. We have one pay estimate. It's number one and final to James Dean Construction for $72,484. And this is for the downspouts on Roosevelt Grade Road. On the construction program, stripings on hold until chip ceilings completion of all. Old Mountain Road, the contractor is hammering through some hard rock in the first of the project, so they were on that last week and they're working hard to remove that rock from one of the vertical changes at the very beginning. So that's kind of slowed progress. Nothing new on our grant funded projects, the safety projects, guard rail repair is complete. And then West Arlen Road, I think we're sending the contract to the PA's office and then it'll go out and we'll get that one signed by the contractor as well. The.
Input on whether we're going to be able to do those in a fire season that we're in?
Right now, we can do it. I don't know when they go to level four. We'll check again. They've been pretty good about stuff in the road prism.
Yeah.
So long as you're on that road surface, which most all of this work will be, we're good.
That we should.
Yeah. And then the paper that we, Roosevelt, that we put back out to add, we have three registered bidders again. One of them is different. One dropped out. We picked up one, so. Still have three. Let's see. Courtney Road, we have the deviation and then we are done and ready to advertise. Maintenance guys, they are all chip ceiling on Beezy Glenwood Highway. The west side, they're all ganging up on that to haul enough rock and keep the, the oil rig moving. On the facility side, the new building, so they washed the exterior of the building a couple of weeks ago now, and so this, either this, the end of this week or first of next week, they'll come back and seal the brick and then it'll be done on the outside. So that'll complete that, at least for the building on the outside. There's more. There's some shades, sunshades that go above all the windows on the south side.
Yes, your, your sunshade you're waiting for.
Yeah. Let's see, and then all the construction on the site, the civil work, Court Street, they're rebuilding that, they're raising that center section by our entrance into the front parking lot of the courthouse grounds. And then they'll start construction in the alley next week. And keep moving through that. The drywallers inside the building are still taping and mudding the lids that had to be poured in the stairways. They're working their way up on both ends. So those are the last things to be finished. Electrical, electrical subs still pulling, there's a lot of low voltage wires to be pulled. And so they're still pulling that on all three floors. They're finishing the electrical on the first floor, installing lights on the first floor, and so power, they set the bolt. When they set those transformers that same week, and so they have a couple of risers they're picking up this week. And then PUD will come back and set the transformer. And hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll have power in the building. That's not just temporary power. Which will help them, electricians get to start getting things fired up inside the building. Mechanical, they're still working on the third floor. They have some items to complete, and then there's furniture. We have the last of the ancillary furniture. We still are working through the last details of that, so that's the the conference room furniture, the furniture in the lobbies and those kinds of things. So minor stuff, that'll get added to the furniture. We've already ordered for the offices. So the offices were the critical part. We can live without this stuff that got delayed, so, but it's, it should be here at the, at the right time anyway.
Did they, were they able, because I know there was some issues with some of the doors, the interior doors and stuff, does that?
Um, the doors, yeah, they're still delayed. All the wood doors are delayed, but it shouldn't delay the project. They'll just, I think it's, there was a couple of week delay that they were told.
Were told, right.
You know, you have to wait two weeks and then see if it's reality.
Suppliers never lie about schedules.
Yeah.
Now, yeah. Or misinformed. They don't lie.
Yeah. They were told.
They were told.
Yeah, so anyway, that, it's still, shouldn't affect schedule. And they're, the contractor's still the end of September, so we'll see how that goes. They haven't changed their schedule yet, so. Expenditures, so just an update, we're about 80% paid out for the construction of the building itself. And then with the $13,752,756 is where we're at currently. And then the change orders were just under a million dollars, which is about 6%, and we are budgeted for 8% contingencies. So we're under that and I know, we, we shouldn't be over, so. That's good.
Yeah.
So we're on schedule and, and budget is, is good too. Nothing new with Annex Five. We're just kind of slowly chipping away, getting that ready to move when we move people out of it. And then last night I met with the city public works committee to talk about vacating Grant Street and they agreed that they would move that forward to the council. And so either this month or next month, they'll move forward with that to vacate that portion between Allen and Court. So and then we'll have our parking lot, our larger parking lot there. Let's see. Courthouse entry, I don't know if you wanted to.
Yeah, we're, everything will be poured out that we have formed by the end of this, should be by the end of this week. And so we have one week here on the east side. We're hoping to get another. They're gonna put in the handrails and we're hoping to have the main entrance here open next week. It'll have a path to it as, you know, because this will be closed here before long. So there'll be a path that comes from the south side comes up. And then we'll, once we open that, we'll close the south side.
Are they eating the sidewalk on the south side too, or just the apron below the stairs?
Just the apron below the stairs, all the way out to the ADA ramp.
Yeah.
Yeah, it goes out, takes a right, goes to the ADA ramp.
So people have a ice free path?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, out to the street. And then the, so the path Jeff's talking about for the front entry will be like this gravel path that we formed up there along the north side, because our, in about two more weeks, the building contractor, once they get done with the alley work, then they'll move over and they'll start on this, on this side. So this will go away, so we'll have a gravel path through the grass down to that sidewalk. So it'll be challenging for most of the summer, but it, it will be much nicer.
Yeah, when it's all done. Yeah, the south side stairs actually get bigger, larger. Because we have that piece that's between them, that's gravel.
Yeah.
And people kind of like to take the shortcut, that'll all be paved. These steps are not paved, but be concrete.
All right, so the fairgrounds, the new PA system will be installed next week. There's a lot of things starting on the 19th, I think. We also meet this week with the Fair Board to start talking about all the things that they need to have done for the, the fair they see happening this year. So what facilities need to be taken care of and what events they have planned, so we can schedule our people and get everything ready in the, about a month left that we have, which is short time for us. Radio sites, I don't know if you, everything seems to be on hold.
Everything's on hold now.
Yeah. And then the auditor's office, the state wants to upgrade their licensing system, so we're working with them. That'll start next week on the 19th. They'll come and, I'm not sure if they're pulling in a new cable from the server room up there or just new equipment. There, they have, it's hard. I talked to the state licensing people and they're, they have vendors that have vendors and it's like, we're not, it's an upgrade. We're not sure what it is, so.
Well, hopefully the folks that come here know.
Install it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Brenda's, Brenda knows what's going on.
So no licensing on the 19th, obviously, I assume.
Might be delayed at some point in the day. Let's see, other follow-up issues. So the other item I talked to the council, City Council of Golden Dale bow is the tour. And they would like to bring three council members and the mayor on Monday at 10 o'clock. And I'm gonna, I'll just take them through the, the tour of the building and I think they can, that's all they can have without having a quorum, so. Then they'll.
You know, the citizens can say. They have somebody.
Well, we have that workshop for code compliance, but I think I heard that Jake was gonna be on that Zoom meeting.
So he's gonna be the one.
So I'll go do the courthouse of the city.
Okay.
What are you signing me up for?
You're not here.
You're not here, so guess what?
Monday, the 19th, 10 o'clock, code compliance workshop via Zoom. It's on the calendar. We'll just put your name next to it.
That's all right. I know. Just don't sign me up for anything else.
And then the last thing, just an update, that Central Highway is closed above Lyle because of the fire. And it's been closed since last night or this morning.
Okay.
And that's it for our list unless you got something else.
Well, we remember the water's thick. Right, so L and I come up with new rules. You know, we're big on these things, so they've instituted now that the employer is responsible for water for the employees that work outside.
Okay.
So what that means for us is, is we have to buy water for our employees.
Cold water.
Cold water, so we gotta have, I, I. Yeah, so we are purchasing that. It's, you know, we have it.
So that would be any, like the road crews, the.
Buildings and grounds, yes.
The days of the old bucket with Gatorade.
Those are old. No, those are.
As the individual.
It doesn't have to be individual, but we've seen what the Gatorade bucket looks like because nobody ever. No, nobody went to drink.
A lot of plastic bottle ways to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They say you want to encourage people to drink water and the buckets don't encourage that.
Exactly.
Yeah, but you know, when it occurs, cold water, because cold water is actually bad.
Yeah, it says cool water is how it's, what the definition of that, 50 to 60 degrees or 40 to 50.
All right.
Just kind of giving you the heads up. If you see a bunch of water purchases on the bills, that's what.
Ice.
Ice.
Oolers. Okay.
And we're required from May to September, anytime the temperature gets above 89 degrees.
Where the dark.
Pressure dangerous.
Okay. I guess. Okay, any. Go ahead.
Talk to sheriff deputies. And apparently you guys went through and did a little patch up job on Dallas Mountain Road.
Yeah, we graded it and, yeah.
They said, thank you very much. They liked it.
Good.
So that, that was my concern and it sounds like it was addressed quickly, so I appreciate that. Has Solar done the mag chloride on Middle Road out there yet, or is that still on their list?
Yeah, their mag chloride is delayed, but they'll be out there tomorrow grading. Yep, so they're, they couldn't get flaggers until this week Wednesday and, but they let me know that they, like everything else, every other material supplier, it's.
Everything's late.
Yeah, late, but they'll grade it, which is, that's really what needs to happen.
Okay, and then status radio tower. When we had the Wishron fire, we could not talk to each other, even though we were in line of sight of them. So it was brought up again about that radio tower being what we need so we can communicate. And so I was curious with Jake's proposal of the Conservation District buying that piece and then us buying that piece from Conservation District. How long is that gonna delay? Potentially moving forward with that radio tower.
Depends on how long it takes for them to close the deal. And then, so now we're closing two deals, but ours, what they, the district will probably be pretty quick, I would think. I don't know how long it's gonna take them to close the deal with Western Pacific.
I guess I would say for me, and I'm sure Jake's listening, I would like to know from the Conservation District when they're gonna do this, because if they're gonna drag it out too long, I don't know what number is too long, but if they're gonna drag it out too long, that'd be interesting.
So, so what I've, what I understood when we, Jeff and I were on the phone with them is it's at the Conservation District, because it's all the grant dollars, they had to close by the end of July or they lose the money. So that's why we stepped away and said, you guys buy it, we'll deal with you afterwards, because $4 million is, we don't want to give that money back.
Right.
And so they should be closing, they should be closing shortly. I'll, I'll get in touch with Lauren and double check.
Perfect. No, that, that sounds great. I just wanted to make sure we weren't gonna go through another years with it to go to. Good enough. That's all I have.
Okay, did you have anything, Jake, for the public works folks?
Nope, I'm good. Keep up the good work, gentlemen.
Thank you. The only thing, just pass on a positive note, also the, had a nice email from the folks out in Lyle with grading the, the road down to the park, the mile one, whatever you call that, and how quick and responsive we were, so it's.
Good.
Good. It's nice when we get something positive. I like to pass that on.
Thank you.
Quick and responsive in that, so yeah.
Okay, that's it. All right, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good.
Yeah, the fire is across the river from you, so you're good.
Yeah. We decided to click its hat. I mean, it's all bad, but.
Yeah.
It was. The only impact I had was no electricity.
Right.
And I had to go the long way here, which is not really the long way.
Right.
It's really, it's the same either way. I just like going through the hybrid, just because.
It's beautiful.
Yeah.
Yeah. I still can't get over all the housing up there.
No.
That's just crazy.
Concern about the fire was.
Right.
It gets in there, it's bad.
Yeah, I think they built on every piece of land that they could possibly.
Yeah.
Nut. But they still haven't developed the jungle yet, you know? The old high school location.
Oh, the jungle. I do, I know exactly what you're, I've heard of, referred to that.
Oh, that's what it was. It was a jungle.
It was, it was some, it's, was some weird.
It was a cane-like tree.
Grew up and we loved going and playing.
Yeah, it was just, it was like. Right above where the, what's now the community center, used to be the little kindergarten school.
Yeah, that's what we called it, the jungle.
Yeah.
And it had a weird smell on it.
I lived right across from there, so yeah. That was right below Jimmy Curl.
Yeah.
In the park, in the church parsonage, what that was. I watched a car launch off, come down by Jimmy Curl's one winter and launched off the top into the possum. They were drunk, they were hurt.
What was it, B?
No. No.
They never proved that. All right. We're running a little ahead. I'll defer to the sheriff. Do you want to get started or do you want to wait till the scheduled time? Okay, good.
There were a total of 4,765 calls for service from January 1st to July 6th. In addition to the calls for service, deputy sheriff, a total of 288 civil papers during the same time period. Now, the 4,705 calls for service, because all the calls came in the dispatch, some of them will be city, county, so. We are still working on body camera research to present to the board of county commissioners. We're setting up meetings with vendors, Gitac, Exxon, to see what they can offer in the line of body cameras and what the cost will be. We have already met with WatchGuard Company representative and they have presented what they can do for us in the cost. Once we meet with the other two vendors, then we'll put the package together and indicate which vendor we think can best provide for us and what cost that would be.
Do you think that'll happen this year?
Are there other, other counties, you know, departments that are using body cams?
Yes, and that's one of the things.
Because I'm always an advocate of not reinventing the wheel and somebody else has kind of figured it out as far as the logistics.
Goes with what matches our software.
Well, that's that true.
Exactly. So anyway, hopefully we'll have a good package for you gentlemen.
Okay.
On June 11th, 12th and 13th, we attended the Cleveland Pioneer Rodeo, picnic and rodeo. The sheriff's policy members performed due parking duties, rodeo ground security, security of the beer garden. The event had record crowds. Everyone appeared to be having a great time. In fact, was told that the Saturday attendance alone outdone prior to date events.
Yeah, that's the longest I've ever waited for a corn dog.
You got yours.
Yeah, you didn't get yours, did you?
I got mine. Somebody else didn't get theirs.
On June 18th, 19th and 20th, we attended the Glenwood Parade and Rodeo, which had a beer garden as well. Again, the sheriff's policy played a major role in parking vehicles, providing rodeo ground security. The events had, again, record crowds. Everyone had a great time visiting and so forth. Both rodeos went off extremely well. We had a little incident at the Cleveland one. There was a cat fight outside the dance hall, late, late the evening. And no one got seriously hurt and no one got arrested. We heard about, we heard about it.
I see you're shaking your head. Okay.
It wasn't me either.
I watched it.
I cleaned the bibs.
All right, I just wanted to be sure there was some. A lot of head shaking going on.
The Clickatack County policy members played a critical role in assisting the sheriff's office in the above events. The policy offered the partial deal, vacation home checks, courtroom security and numerous other duties. The Posse offered to provide security, vacation home checks, courtroom security and numerous other duties as a side. The sheriff's posse is a volunteer organization. On January twenty-one to June twenty-one, the Posse have donated one thousand nine hundred and thirty-four point seven five hours to the sheriff's office in providing a service to the citizens of Clickatack County. If the Posse members were getting minimum wage of fifteen dollars an hour, they would have provided twenty-nine thousand twenty-one dollars of service for the county from January twenty-one to June twenty-one. Update, our air wing pilots have logged seven hundred and eighty hours from January twenty-one to June twenty-one in providing a volunteer service to the sheriff's office and the citizens of Clickatack County. At a rate of two hundred and eighty dollars per flight hour, the county has saved approximately two hundred and eighteen thousand more dollars if we had to pay for it. This also does not take into account the numerous voluntary hours that the Clickatack County Sheriff's Reserve deputies donated to the sheriff's office in providing law enforcement services to the citizens of Clickatack County. The reason I mention this is because I'd heard through rumor control, which is always reliable, that uh, there was some concern about the Posse maybe being a liability to the county. I can assure you that liability, hell, if we crawl in a patrol car, that's liability. I mean, there's always a certain amount of liability. But I think the Posse, which is citizens who volunteer their service in a partnership with the sheriff's office to provide a service is a plus, not a negative. And uh, so that's why I bring this out. And for example, with our air patrol, they go up every morning right now and they look for smoke where smoke is not supposed to be. And uh, so you have some prevention activities going on there that could save us a fire, a tremendous fire. Of course, as we speak, there's a fire going right now. But, but they not only play that role during fire season, but they also look for bad guys for us, trying to search for us. They look for lost people and, and have been successful. On occasions find it.
Have we ever found any marijuana grows with our airplanes in our county?
Oh, yes.
One, two, five?
More than I can probably count over the years?
Yeah, it's been very productive. And of course, the idea that, well, marijuana is legal, there's no problem. That's naivety and just plain not true. These, these canyons out here in our county are prime grows for cartel grows. And we have proven this through our investigations over the years, that it is in fact cartel. It's not some local juggle out there throwing a few weeds for himself. And actually, they harvest here, they don't sell it here, they harvest and they move it throughout the United States. And uh, we've been very successful in the past, but I'm convinced for everyone we take down, there's probably two or three we don't know about. So, they do their math. They know our manpower structure uh, throughout, uh, throughout our county. And uh, I'm sure they, they figure all that in. I do have a press release here prepared by under sheriff Tim Neer. On July third, the Clickatack County Sheriff's Office responded to a residence on Semple Mountain Road in Centerville, Washington, where it reported a subject trespass. Deputy Pat Kaylee responded and met with Deputy David West, the property owner, Mr. West advised Deputy Kaylee. He had installed trail cameras on his property and the trail cameras sent immediate pictures to his home. Mr. West advised Deputy Kaylee, one of the trail cameras had been activated and sent a picture of a male subject trespassing on his property. Mr. West and Deputy Kaylee located Kevin Oliver, twenty-eight years old of Centerville, Washington, lying face down on the ground on Mr. West's property near some of Mr. West's vehicles. Deputy Kaylee ordered Mr. Oliver to put his hands up and get off of the ground. Mr. Oliver refused to cooperate and reached into the waist of Deputy Kaylee. Deputy Kaylee pointed his service pistol at Mr. Oliver and warned Mr. Oliver he would shoot him. Mr. Oliver put his hands up. It's amazing how that works. And stood up so Deputy Kaylee could see he had nothing in his hands. Keep in mind in our training, hands will kill you. That's why you gotta know, they got nothing in their hands. Deputy Kaylee moved into a better position to control Mr. Oliver. Mr. Oliver became aggressive towards the deputy. Deputy Kaylee transitioned from his pistol to his taser and ordered Mr. Oliver to get on the ground. Mr. Oliver cussed at Deputy Kaylee, refusing to cooperate with Deputy Kaylee's orders. Deputy Kaylee had to deploy his taser and subdued Mr. Oliver. But one of the taser probes became on display. Deputy Kaylee attempted to deploy his taser, second hand of mess. Deputy Kaylee moved in and left hands on with Mr. Oliver. Was able to subdue him, placing him in handcuffs. Mr. Oliver, Deputy Kaylee searched Mr. Oliver, person incident to arrest and found in his possession a several bank and quest cards belonging to other people. Mr. Oliver was also found in possession of a pill bottle that belonged to Mr. West's grandson. The pill bottle had been inside one of the vehicles owned by Mr. West. Deputy Kaylee also found a slim jim and screwdriver on Mr. Oliver's person. While Deputy Kaylee was searching Mr. Oliver, Mr. West spoke with Mr. Oliver about his four decisions of coming onto this property. Mr. Oliver attempted to headbutt Mr. West and Mr. Oliver was taken to the ground by Deputy Kaylee. Mr. Oliver was transported to the Clickatack, Clickatack County Valley Hospital. Before being booked in the Clickatack County Jail, Mr. Oliver was charged with criminal trespass in the second degree, having a, having or missing a burglary tool and resisting arrest. I would like to point out the benefits of property owners placing cameras systems on their private property. Having pictures of suspects committing crimes are a great asset for law enforcement and it helps with prosecuting suspects of various crimes. I want to also commend Deputy Kaylee and how he handled himself when dealing with such a difficult suspect. And I'd also like to thank Mr. West for his assistance in achieving. Moving on, on July fourth, uh, sheriff's office took part in the White Salmon Fourth of July Parade, which also was a great parade, a lot of people. And then it came off really good. But during the parade, we were notified of the fire in Lyle. And uh, it appears that fire was started by fireworks, bottle rockets, which is under investigation. And I wanna thank all the volunteer firefighters, citizens, under sheriff Tim Neer and Carmen, Chief Carmen Knob, for their assistance in putting out the fire as well. Collective effort and fortunately, we lost no structures and nobody was injured or killed. And that, that says a lot since out of the fire was actually burning between structures there. So, very proud of their, their involvement there. Uh, might add, there'll be another press release coming out. I was informed by the under sheriff that Detective Sergeant Eric Anderson has made an arrest. I believe he's made the arrest.
Yeah, he went and cited eighteen-year-old um, and has gone ahead and forwarded his case up to the attorney general's office through the Department of Natural Resources. And they'll do a cost recovery for fighting that fire. Uh, the estimates at this time are between seventy-five and a hundred thousand dollars.
And at this point, I'd like to refer to Chief Joe Dippeney, Carmen Knob.
Good morning. So it's pretty short this time. I won't stay here forever. On June twenty-third, Kathy Jo Randall graduated with her certificate as a certified corrections officer. And she's returned to the jail and will be working with her field training officer. That amount of time determines on uh, her progress. Sometimes it can be six weeks, sometimes down to four weeks. She's um, really doing a great job and it's a nice addition to have another female. I'm not being called over the jail on a daily basis to search females. Thank goodness. On July first, Chris Ballasteros reported to CJTC to begin his academy training. He will be the first from our agency to participate in the very first ten-week academy at CJTC. And he will graduate sometime in early September. Uh, Chris is really good about reporting to me um, every Friday messages me that he made it home safely, I guess, kind of the mom role, you know? But he's really enjoying the curriculum and is actively participating in the activities daily at the school or in the classroom, so.
So the ten-week course now represents how, what was the previous before?
Four.
Four weeks.
So we bumped it up. Four to ten, that's quite a substantial amount of time.
What did they add to the training to get that? What, I mean.
They added fifty-two hours of guardianship. I do know that.
De-escalation.
De-escalation. Um, still unfortunately, they're only doing eight hours of CIT training, which I believe we're gonna have to do forty, so I don't know why they don't incorporate that while they're at the academy.
Are you able to do that here to make up the difference? You gotta send them somewhere else.
Well, we're, we're gonna have to do a forty-hour class. So I've got um, almost all my guys through their minimum updates on the CIT. Uh, we had some scheduling issues, so I'm working with CJTC on that.
Remind me CIT.
Criticism intervention training.
Yeah, and so we've taken.
And the de-escalation training.
Yeah. So, and we continue our training. Um, on July second, Corrections Deputy Zach McBride and Joseph Randall participated in the LETS training at the fairgrounds and they're the only two out of the jail who chose to participate. They both enjoyed that training and were extremely pleased they had that opportunity. Um, on July seventh, Corrections Deputy Zach McBride, Joseph Randall and Charlie Garcia completed their firearms training at the Dallasport Range with the assistance of our range masters. And this training will now allow them to carry a firearm for transport and court security. Note also that Zach McBride and Joseph Randall scored a hundred percent in their firearms training. Uh, Charlie, he said, oh, I didn't do as good as the other guys. Uh, Charlie was born and raised in New York and this was the only fourth time he'd ever held a firearm, so. He passed and that's the important part, so uh, he can only improve, so that was good to know. The courts, we've been busy with the courts, but I only highlighted the one in June. Teresa Tarasita Mohico was found guilty in a jury trial in Superior Court. Malika will serve a seventy-five month sentence for residential burglary and taking motor vehicle without owner's permission, second degree. And she was transported to the Department of Corrections. Uh, Teresa Tarasita Mohica was uh, the person who was arrested after an incident at the Mary Hill Museum Caretaker's residence. She broke into that residence, stayed for a couple of days, stole the truck. It was quite a long convoluted story. Um, in the end, she came to jail, was found guilty and now is finally put away, so where she belongs. Uh, transports, uh, jail transport numbers are kind of down for this month. We've went to Ellensburg and Yakima to meet the Department of Corrections to transfer custody of inmates. We have a mutual agreement to meet either, at either Yakima or Ellensburg. Uh, we had to move an inmate out of Coyote Ridge Prison this last month to come down for a hearing. And we worked with them so we could just do a meet. That's pretty helpful when they do that. On June twenty-eighth, Sergeant Gillivan Corporal Cooper drove to the Monroe Prison to pick up Asa Israel on a Superior Court warrant. He's currently being held on a twenty thousand dollar uh, bail for attempting to elude a pursuing police officer and a hit-and-run attended vehicle and his third count was obstructing a law enforcement officer. And that was a City of Goldendale case where he was involved in a hit-and-run and then took off down Columbus and ended up going into Oregon. He was stopped finally in Oregon, spent time over there in Norcore. Also had a DOC hold, so that's why he ended up at Monroe because DOC transports uh, directly go to a prison. Um, so that's where we were able to pick him up at. So he's currently awaiting trial in the jail. Uh, we've had several calls to comprehensive to evaluate inmates in crisis. The jail staff is well versed in this process to maintain the safety of the inmates and can be, continues to exercise good judgment when dealing with inmates in a crisis situation. Anytime an inmate is threatening suicide, they immediately put them into a suicide smock, uh, which is a very thick, heavy, non-terrible fabric. It's all Velcro and they can't, you, they can't strip it into things to make a robe or anything like that. It's pretty self indestructible. And then from there, they're placed in crisis. Um, if that doesn't work, we also have our new wrap security restraint and it wraps them up and it Velcros them and they can't move their legs, sit out straight in front of them and they're sitting like this. And then they come with a, it has a nice padded helmet that goes with it if they're really intent on hurting themselves. So, we've utilized that a couple of times. It can be used for just somebody out of control and also for somebody in a mental health crisis.
Is comprehensive being adequate in responding?
Yes. For the jail, yeah.
Sounds like we need to have another.
So the jail is currently down uh, one possession with the resignation of Sandy that we talked about last time. Uh, civil service will be conducting, conducting a test. I believe that test is a seventeenth. So we're testing for civil clerk and for a control ward operator because we lost Angel, so we're having that combined test on that day. And then on the twenty-fourth, we're gonna have a corrections deputy test as well, so we can build that list up. Cause we know for sure that Zach Anderson is leaving soon as he finds a job and a residence up in the Marysville Arlington area, so.
You know you have a vacancy coming.
Yeah, I know I have a vacancy coming, yeah. Which is unfortunate because he's my computer guy, so now I have to find a new computer guy. So we've been, our main obstacles right now are vacation, family leave and academy training. This month, we've got four on vacation at the same time, plus one at the academy and then it's just kind of a crazy nightmare. Uh, some other things to add, our current population is nineteen. We were up to twenty-one the other day. Uh, we have a new trend happening in the jail and not quite sure how to fix this. A lot of these people come in, they're of course um, used to having drugs on a daily basis and so now they're drug seeking and so how do you get drugs? But you hurt yourself so you can go to the hospital and get the drugs. So you know, the big heavy doors that go into the cells so that they can have privacy. Uh, we've got it on camera. We've got the video footage and they stand there with their hand out and they, you can see them getting up the nerve and then they slam their hand into the, with the door. It's brutal to watch, but it tends to break all of the bones across your hand.
And not only that, is then we get to pay the medical bills.
Correct. Uh, so uh, the one I had was uh, recently was a City of Goldendale, um, before I took him to the hospital because he wasn't obviously nine-one-one emergency dying, so I didn't directly run him up. I called uh, the chief of police. We promptly released him. Uh, he now has a warrant because he forgot to, what the judge said to come back to jail, so he has a warrant. He'll be back. Uh, the other day, we had one of ours um, also do the same thing. Uh, we took him to the hospital. I wasn't releasing him and he only bruised his hand, so he wasn't successful. So now he is residing in a hold cell for his duration of his stay until, um, because I'm not gonna give him another opportunity to because we control the door now in a hold cell. He doesn't get that control, so. My one solution was we'll just go and take all the doors off and we'll just have dormitory style operation. That would solve that problem, but the only problem then is you can't just lock somebody down when they need to lock down, so. I don't know quite how to fix that other than I, I just don't know.
The rest of them see somebody locked and holding, they can.
Yeah.
They'll, they'll learn that. They don't want.
That's what I'm hoping. Uh, Nellie, our transport vehicle, it was on a transport coming back from the Monroe trip last week or week before, whatever it is now. And the air conditioning went out at about Ellensburg and it was a hundred and some degrees. They had to make a couple stops along. They had to make a couple stops along the way to let the inmate out just because it gets really stuffy in there. So tomorrow. Reserve Deputy. Ken Clinton and myself are leaving at five thirty in the morning to take Nellie down to Chehalis to Bronda. Have the air conditioning repaired on that, so Nellie's currently out of service for a little while. We continue to use the posse for court next week, we're. Have trials scheduled upstairs, so they'll be handing all that security for the trial and. They've been doing a phenomenal job, I couldn't ask for a better group of people to come in and, and take over where we're not able to at this point. And tonight, Tim and I are gonna be attending the Wild Community Meeting so that we can discuss. The fires.
The fires.
Fires, right. And, and what they're, you know, I'm sure they're gonna have questions for what the Sheriff's Office role is and everything for that. And then I just had a fleeting thought and it's gone and I guess that's.
You know, how much are you gonna be able to share about the previous buyer and? The arrest and the, because I know that's gonna be one of the questions the community's gonna wanna know. Are there gonna be consequences, you know, understanding that? You can charge somebody that doesn't, you know, they're, they're not convicted, they're.
They don't have any money, you're not gonna get money out of it.
So I'll try to do a press release ahead of time and then I probably read the press release there. That should give the public information on. Kind of what transpired and who was arrested and where it goes from there. There are a lot of laws related to people setting off fireworks, because I know one of the concerns is. Why didn't the county make fireworks illegal during that? These were illegal fireworks. So these are bottle rockets, they're not legal anywhere in the state of Washington, you can buy them on the tribal reservation, you know, tribal land. We dealt with that a few years ago and they said, no, you can't regulate that stuff. So even if Quinett County had made fireworks illegal.
Right.
This still would have happened.
Right.
You know, and by, you know, the concern that somebody who's a volunteer firefighter and I'm also a fire investigator. The concerns that I would have if we made fireworks illegal and somebody had, you know, just a small one and set it off. They're less apt to stick around, just like this group did, as soon as they set the fireworks off. They shot out of there and they were gone, the fire took off and burned into town. We had to do a level three evacuation for the entire town. Because we literally with all the confusion, we couldn't figure out how far into town that was, so.
Yeah, I'm trying, I've tried to prepare myself as far as the understanding that. You know, what tools? You know, that we even have available to us as far as the county to.
One of the other things, you notice Benjamin White Salmon put a band on fireworks. The band is great. Doesn't work.
It sounds good.
And they were, they were nonstop responding to reports of that.
People are gonna be setting off fireworks regardless. So you can only hope that they follow safe procedures in doing stuff. And there's an expectation, if there's a band, there's an expectation of the police, you're arrested. We don't have a jailway enough to hold everybody.
Well, and I worry about the nine million phone calls to nine-one-one and then somebody that has a heart attack and you get through. So what did we really accomplish other than? You know, defeating the purpose of nine-one-one. Was that person that got cited, is he a local lawyer?
Yes. Yes.
Eighteen years old.
Eighteen years old. And there were two. At the late, one was seventeen and. The other one, I'm not sure the age on the other one, could have been sixty years.
Have you met these individuals before?
They were not unknown to us. That's a nice way to put it.
Okay, well, I expect a lively discussion tonight.
Yeah, yeah. I know what I was gonna bring up, Judge Baker called me a couple weeks ago. About West District Court. As you, I don't know if you know, but every week we would drive down to West District Court to participate. Attorneys would take their client off and go speak with them and. Then we'd get, oh, we're setting it over to next week. So it's a huge waste of manpower, wearing tear on a vehicle, right? Overtime pay often for that to happen. So what he proposed was that we utilize this great video system that we have. And install a phone into the interview room that we've set up and dedicated for video court. So that the inmate could communicate by phone privately with their. Attorney. So I got ahold of buildings and grounds and I got ahold of IT and that, we're working on that process, so we're gonna move forward with it. We're able to put a phone in there that will not allow an inmate just to make random phone calls to anybody. It'll be specifically programmed for use with the courts, so.
That's good, I'm, I'm pleased the Judge Baker is, because I know we've. We've tried in the past to suggest. That that would be a big savings for us as far as with, with you folks with manpower and hauling stuff back and forth and he's, in the past has been. Resistant.
I think COVID has kind of maybe changed his outlook on how we could operate with video and. I think we've been very successful with all of our courts regarding paperwork, because there is a huge paperwork shuffle when it comes to. Courtroom, court documents, so.
I do have one other thing that I just thought about. It's been something we've been fighting for, for a number of years. We went up and did a photo op at their request at the hospital.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
On the safe room.
Yeah.
And it appears that they're in the process, they gotta get certain permits. But they're actually serious about putting that safe room in. And that's gonna save us in the city numerous man-hours and not having a deputy tied up up there. And they'll have a camera system and the nurses station will be able to watch it on the monitor. If for some reason they have to get an officer up there. The way it is and has been. We got a guy who's a guy.
We had three tied up there last week with one. He was a, he was. He's being charged with a false information. He called. With a bogus story and then tells the deputy, if you don't take me, I'm gonna say I'm suicidal, then you'll have to take me. He was looking for a ride. Long story short, he ended up at KBH for a mental health evaluation.
Looking for a ride to KBH?
He was looking just for a ride.
Right.
To Goldendale. Yeah, first PO, so he ended up at KBH for a mental health crisis. They, because the mental health detained, decided they were gonna just detain him. So we had a deputy sitting on that for a couple hours. Must have been on a, I got ahold of the sheriff and I. Got authorization to put a posse member up there so we could relieve the deputy, so he could go out and do his daily duties. Well. That deputy kept getting called back and so did the other deputy that was on duty that day and they dealt with him all day long. Clear up until probably five, six o'clock. At one point, I was on the phone with the subject, because somehow he got on a, he was able to make a phone call from the hospital. And I talked to him for a good fifteen or twenty minutes, trying to convince him he needed to. Go forward with the detainment and everything and then he talked about for another fifteen or twenty minutes. It was a very time-consuming day and really a waste of our resources when if they would have had that room available. He could have went in. And our guys could have.
Save some time and. And. Anyway, I told the guy to knock it off, be a man. Knock your crap off, follow what they tell you to do. And he said, okay. He had a cigarette outside, they allowed him. But he was a game player and he ended up getting charged with.
Yeah, I think once they learn they get away with the games, they keep trying and then.
Yeah, right, right. Yeah, I have to play in games in jail right now and with phones and stuff, so they, they're limited now to attorney phone calls only. After I consulted the prosecutor's office, so. It's all a learning curve for them.
Yeah, Jake, you're on the phone, any questions for the sheriff or? His folks?
No questions here.
Isn't I know, or so we've been told. All right, thank you.
Thanks guys, see you tonight, Dave.
See you tonight.
Yeah.
HR Director, you like to.
I'd buy the post over there. Mr. Van Cleve, what's on your mind?
Thank you, Commissioner. On behalf of the Public Health Department, I'd request verbal permission to post a clerical admin reposition. Steps one through three, they have an opening point transferred to another department.
Yes, I heard about that.
Where did they go?
Upstairs.
So Brenda sold them. Which she's been stolen from, so I guess. It's her turn, fair play.
So we posted this typical one through three and. So if, if you're stolen.
Yes, yeah, I'm, yes, you okay Jake?
I'm good.
Thank you, Commissioner, thanks Lee. Thanks, Ebi.
Few minutes if there's. I have a couple of items from late during pending, but we can do them now. Okay, well, I'll just give a quick update, I did, as I had said on Tuesday, I did travel over on Wednesday, met with the. Recommodation Housing Authority, had. The Wishram School Superintendent and. Facilities manager slash everything, Ty Churchwellis, I'm, I'm not sure what his title is, but it's, he has a whole bunch of them. And then also the Fire Chief and a Fire Commissioner from the Wishram Fire District. So we went over to Wapato and, and met with a very, very productive. Meeting. Very positive, I'm pleased to. Let us, let folks know they are going to be sending us over a draft Pilt Agreement, so they are planning on. So they are going to be paying. Payment in lieu of taxes.
Did you come up with a number or you?
Well, there is a number, there is a formula in the, and so. That's what we're assuming they're going to send over to us, we will look at that. I don't know how much negotiation we have, because it's a formula, they can. Actually. Do those on district, you know, district by district, it's pretty much been decided. From all the districts that were participating that. The preferred method is to just to have one omnibus, single. Agreement with the county that we will then distribute by the formula, the dollars to the districts, just like we do with taxes where we. Collect them all and then the fire district gets theirs, EMS, schools, fire, everybody will get there. So that was, I thought was really positive, so.
Is it gonna be a yearly Pilt or a one time?
No, it's a yearly, it's an ongoing. They. Indicated that that actually was a condition of the funder that funded the project. Or at least a, a strong request, and so they. They, they acknowledged that, you know, the. Local government, we're gonna be providing all the services from law enforcement to fire and everything and that they need to pay their. Their fair share towards that.
I'm appreciative of the funders.
Yeah, so, no, very, very. Good, there was some concerns with the facilities capability. To be able to take the number of kids they're projecting. They told the district to plan on about ninety kids in the, the current enrollment at Wishram is sixty-seven, so just to have some perspective. It's not gonna drop all at once, they're actually, if you'll notice when I drove by today, too, I looked, they are. They're constructing in phases and so they, they, the first families. There will be two houses that are supposed to be delivered, ready to. Move in ready, starting in October, and then they are projecting two every month.
Manufacturing or pretty bad.
No, they're, they're building them on site as far as, so they are under construction. I saw they got the, they were sheeting the roof. This week, I saw on the first two houses, they have foundations going on, so there's, you know, like they're in stages around there, but they will. So it will be sort of a soft rollout, you know, two families a month, starting in October. Over the next. You know, year or so. To get it really constructed, so as I said, very, very good meeting. So that was good. I also, I was hoping we can have a. Follow-up, our discussion and I'll, I'll defer to you, Commissioner Christopher, on the Goldendale Reds Project. I did, on that same day, I stopped on my way back, met with Leslie and so she kind of gave me the. The pitch and, and I know you're, you're the one on the committee, but I know there's the funding request that. Based on what I, what I've seen, I'm, I'm very supportive of us providing that funding. I think we were actually the seed money to begin with and even started the whole project, they. They got, I believe it was seventy, we had authorized seventy-five thousand of point oh nine dollars for that. They actually only got sixty because they had done some work before the contract was signed. So I haven't, I've only seen a couple of comments back from folks as far as on. Casapita, so I, I don't know, but I know there's some. You know, time is of the essence for us to make a commitment one way or the other, so, because there, I did, I did speak with. Folks over at McCad to be where they're at as far as to be able to, if they're supporting the effort and. I've been assured, because I'm on that board, it was kind of like, you know, I think it's a good thing, let's put some, let's put some effort towards that. I was assured from the top that, oh no, they're working on it and so. Because the, the biggest, my biggest concern is this is a really great opportunity, but the. It's stuff like, if we're gonna do it, then they need to do it well or don't do it at all, because if it, if you. If you squander the opportunity and you go ahead and kind of hack, pull it off. All those funders that you've invited. You know, they're gonna remember if it was not well done and then that would affect stuff that we wanna do in the future.
The way it was kind of told is they would, they would like to have this a year from now.
Yeah.
But getting on their list.
Right.
Good luck with that, so.
So it's now or never.
Now or never.
Right.
And that's why the, the Casapita funding was. So important that we move on it quickly so they can have time to wrap this up in a nice little bow and.
Yeah, yeah, twelve weeks or now, I guess it's only eleven weeks, it's not a lot of time to pull us together, so. So I just, I'll, I'll just say I'm, I'm in favor of us funding that now, now that I have more information, so.
I talked to Leslie, she said she sounded, it sounded like you were.
I know, she was like, well, can you communicate with, you know, with, with Dan Lett, and I was like, no, I, I can't. I will on Tuesday, but I can't. If you wanna check in with him, that's your business. So it sounds like she must have, so that was good, okay, so that's. I guess that's all I got for right now as far as on board pending.
Community Days, I don't know if you guys went to that, it was a booming success, probably the biggest one I've ever been around for.
You think that's like all of these events are like people have just been so.
A lot of it.
You know, where they just wanna get out and do something.
Well, I think a lot of it is that, but around here, a lot of it is most of the time everybody's got a great idea, but nobody wants to actually do the work to do it. And in Community Days isn't really a one group runs everything kind of a deal. So a lot of people picked up their own ball and set their own little part of it up. And it was, it was insane, Seabird's new barbecue thing out there, he ran out of food at like one o'clock.
Wow.
So. Hopefully this turns into a two-day event or something in the future, but no, it was. It was big, other than no beer garden for the J.C.'s. Because. That's when I originally brought it up, if we could do something here, they really wanted to put it on Main Street, well then it. Sounds like there were some issues with the local bars, not wanting to share. So it didn't happen, which is kind of why I wanted to go here. But lesson learned, I think in the future they're gonna realize they probably shouldn't have a beer garden on Main Street.
On Main Street.
With three other bars now soon to be four.
Yeah.
So, no, that was good, I did have a meeting yesterday with Lieutenant Governor. The mayor, Mylins, Right Development, all those good fun people. It was good, it was encouraging. I don't know that he knew much of anything about the project. Now he does. I don't know that he has a whole lot of push, but hopefully he's got a connection or two.
Is the, is the Lieutenant, is that Denny Heck?
Yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Christopher, what, what is the project?
Oh, pump storage. We went to pump storage, yes, sorry. So that, I did pump storage and we went up to the observatory to show them the observatory and, no, that was really good too, so. Talked to Wright Development while I was up there, just to kind of get their feelers on where we're at with the college.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Anderson, any, anything for board pending that? Can't wait till after one.
Yeah, we had, we had the by-state work group meeting for the bridge yesterday. Oregon came forward with their five million, so it was the big kumbaya that we, we've got buy-in from Oregon and Washington. And then we talked about the, the legislation for the authorization to actually create like a by-state authority group. And the Oregon side is, is kind of pushing more towards, we're going to write legislation that's going to be more general, so that, that maybe one day, like the Cascade Locks or other bridges amongst any other state, whether it's Idaho, or Washington, or Oregon, or even California for, then you could enter into those by-state agreements. So it's, it's more of a general legislation. We've got more to flesh out there, but right now it's looking, the problem is, is that on Oregon's next legislative agenda, it's a, it's a short session. So each legislature, legislator only gets to put in like two priority projects. And there's a lot of priorities out there. So we may end up having to wait until 2023 before this can like make it completely through the system. But it should still keep us on track. The big thing is, is getting federal dollars right now.
Okay. Well, if there's nothing more, we pretty much filled up our time, so I guess we will adjourn for lunch. We will be back at one o'clock to continue the meeting. So for folks on Zoom, I'll see you then.
Hey there, Lee. This is Jake. I've got, I'm on the phone, but I can't get the Zoom to launch on my computer, so if I can, I'll come in.
Okay.
Okay, it is one o'clock. I will call the meeting. Now I will call the meeting. Let the record show that all three Commissioners are, are participating, two in chambers, and Commissioner Anderson is joining us via telephone at this point. Hopefully he'll zoom in a little bit later. We'll start first with our pledge of allegiance, so folks won't join.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Business agenda?
Yes.
Chairman, make a motion. We approve the business agenda as presented.
Do I have a second from Commissioner Anderson?
I have a second to motion.
Thank you. I have a motion as second to adopt the business agenda as presented. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Commissioner Anderson votes aye. Motion passed.
Did you guys have time to look at the meeting minutes? Are you ready for those?
I did. So yeah, I'm, I'm good.
Great. Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we approve the Commissioner meeting minutes from June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, and June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one, as presented and amended.
I will second the motion.
We have a motion as second on the two sets of minutes. Any discussion on those? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion votes aye as well. Minutes are approved. That brings us to citizen comment.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I can quickly, can we possibly think about making citizen comment three minutes per individual to give these people?
Yeah. Yeah, that is at our discretion. I would be supportive of that. Are you okay with that, Commissioner Anderson?
I don't know how many people are there, but I assume it's plenty then. So yes.
Yeah, so we'll do that. We will, we will move it to three minutes each to try to give folks more time. Which brings us to citizen comment, which I suspect why many of you are here today. I see the sheriff is first in line. Is that?
Hands on Zoom too, so.
Yeah, we have folks, and so we will, out of, out of respect for folks, because we have thirty-eight people online, we will alternate back and forth as we have done in the past, as far as for folks. Citizen comment is an opportunity for citizens to address the board on any topic that's, that's not on the agenda later. So I will start. I will defer to the sheriff if you want to start it out. Go ahead. Let me change my timer from seven minutes to three. Go ahead.
Yes.
I'll try to keep it short within the three minutes, which is unusual for me, but I'll try. I was real disappointed in the board in the June twenty-second meeting, based on the controversy over my June seventeenth letter. I thought and always felt we had a good working relationship. I felt a little slighted that I wasn't invited to my public hanging on that day, on June twenty-second, by the board, and the prosecuting attorney. I didn't appreciate the prosecutor worrying about being arrested based on his perception of what I had to say in the letter. I thought it was very clear. Knowingly and deliberately violating somebody's rights is a, is a violation. So having said that, I think it's interpretation which you may have as violent, uh, the Constitution, and from what I have. It don't mean either one of us are right or wrong. But as an elected sheriff, constitutional sheriff, I'm proud to wear the label of, job is to protect the amendments of the Constitution and enforce the amendments of the Constitution in order to protect the citizens' liberties and rights in our county. That's what they elect me for. I'm sure if I had been appointed by the board, I'd have probably been fired over that issue. But fortunately, you don't have that authority. Now, you do have authority over my budget, and I hope we're never going to get into a dogfight over that. Because that will become public. I'm not making threats, so I don't want anybody to run scared. But as sheriff, which amendments do you want me not to enforce? Which ones? I don't hear an answer. It's sad that we've come to this, that this letter was decided by the board and the county commissioner or prosecutor to be aired publicly. That's your right. I don't have a problem with that, but that's why this is being aired publicly. Because there's a lot of people that believe that our rights are being violated by our governor. And I think down deep in the hearts of some of you, you may even feel that's the case. But you want to wait for the courts to decide that. Well, that's fine. That could come about maybe what, in a year, two years, three years? In the meantime, our small businesses, our churches, the citizens are being hammered with unconstitutional directions. That's not right. It's just pure wrong. And I'll end with that, but please give me an answer to which amendments do you not want me to enforce? I need to know that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We are still in citizen comment. I will go, is there someone on? Okay. Was she first?
Gabrielle's on top.
Okay. Gabrielle Gilbert, you are recognized for three minutes. Please state your name and what community you're from, please.
Hi, my name is Gabrielle Gilbert, and I am outside of White Salmon Fruit Valley. And my commentary is absolutely about the sheriff's proclamation, the fact that he doubles down on it and that he threatens arrest for individuals who have a constitutional right to live their lives and do their work without having the threat of being arrested by a sheriff who interprets the Constitution on his terms. I have difficulty with a sheriff who cannot differentiate the line between church and state. And when he completes, complete, applies his belief in Jesus and places those out as statements, he is paid by a public fund, and the public is represented by all positions and religions, and to pick one is not what the forefathers said was acceptable. What is of the state and what is of the church, you have your freedoms because they are separated. The other problem that I have with the sheriff is that he is literally gaslighting this public health emergency that we are in. We are in a pandemic. And these individuals who are working in the health department felt threatened, felt threatened by his proclamations. And it is unacceptable for our, the people that we live with, our neighbors, the people that serve us, to feel threatened by that. I have a problem with Chris Ann Hall coming in, not because she believes in Jesus, but because she is associated with extreme right-wing anti-government militia and movements, and she goes around on a public circuit and she sows those seeds. I have a problem with that, and I have a problem with a sheriff that doesn't understand that this is a problem. Finally, what I want to say on a completely other thread is that as county commissioners, we have a crisis for daycare and the availability of daycare. And I would like the commissioners to come together with other elected officials and state representatives and start addressing the desert that is daycare in Clickatuck County, and that there are families moving in that require it and who are not being able to find it. And I would like for that kind of discussion to be had, so that we could start maybe having a possibility of a daycare in the hospitals that are in our communities, so that we can start addressing that for the working people and their families. And finally, we are a desert for grant money. A lot of grant foundations don't see us pass, pass Clark and Skimania County, and I feel that as elected officials, you and the others have to start getting those inroads so that grant dollars make it to Clickatuck County, because the need is here. I thank you for your time, and I appreciate it. Have a great day. Oh, and do stand up, you know, if the sheriff is doubling down on his proclamation, double down on yours. Thank you.
Yeah, I will now open, we are still in citizen comment. I will open it up if there's someone in the room that wishes to address the board. This is your opportunity.
Shouldn't Bob get a chance to respond to that?
No, this is not, this, this is citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the board of commissioners, and it's, believe me, we, we have this every week, and they're.
About one topic or the other.
About one topic or the other, and so, no, we. So I will leave the floor open then. If there is someone that wishes to make a statement, please, you will raise your hand first if you'll come up and identify your name for the record and what community you live in.
My name is Morgan Gamble. I've been pretty much a lifelong resident of Clickatuck County, currently residing in Golddale, was raised in Glenwood. Couple things. I'd like to read a section of the Board of Commissioners' statement from June seventeenth to the sheriff. Your statements were construed as threatening and intimidating to elected officials and county employees. Your comments implied the arrest, detention, and recommended prosecution of the following state mandates, of following state mandates and laws that you may disagree with, without first going through the court process and judicial system as deemed by the Constitution. Our county employees should not be made to feel unsafe in their working environment. All elected officials and employees should be allowed to do their job without fear of personal or physical attacks caused by the rhetoric of an elected official. This I agree with to an extent. The judicial process, aside from being sued and it getting to the court system, a law has to be broken, the sheriff has to arrest somebody, and the prosecuting attorney has to pursue it. Correct? So if the sheriff hasn't arrested somebody, how does it get to the court? Lawsuit. Number two, I'm going to read sheriff's, a section of the sheriff's statement. This office will not enforce nor in any way assist in the enforcement of any civil action or criminal, any criminal charge against any person for trespass, which is based on that person's failure to comply with unconstitutional mandates, orders, et cetera, described above. This office will arrest, detain, and recommend prosecution of any government official or agent thereof who knowingly and deliberately violates the rights of people under the pretended authority of an unconstitutional order, edict, mandate, proclamation, directive, or regulation as described above. This office will arrest, detain, and recommend prosecution of any government official or agent thereof who uses his position or his office to influence any private, non-governmental person or corporation to act in such a way as to coerce any person or entity to comply with unconstitutional orders, edicts, mandates, proclamations, directives, regulations, et cetera. The people of Clickatuck County are entitled to protection of their God-given and constitutionally protected rights. As the elected chief law enforcement official of this jurisdiction, it is the responsibility, duty, and privilege of the sheriff to do everything in his lawful power to protect, defend, and secure these rights. I personally do not see any threats in that. We don't have a problem with the sign coming into our community that says if you're going to sell or do drugs, you'll be arrested. If he's saying you break the rights of people breaking laws, you're going to be arrested, what's the difference? So I'd like to go back to a quote.
Your time has elapsed. Thank you for your comments. I will now go to, if there's somebody on Zoom, the second. Lynn Mason, you are recognized for three minutes, and what community are you from?
I'm in White Salmon, and thank you for your time. I'd like to start by saying that the sheriff's views are not my views. I don't stand by that. I don't recognize that, and many other people don't. And I would like him to stop threatening our elected officials. That's not okay, and I don't support that at all. And the fact that this fellow that just spoke that said about protecting people in the county, there's a lot of people that don't feel protected. They actually feel very fearful, and they feel that they're living in a county with a bully. So, no, that rhetoric that I, I just heard does not fly with me. It doesn't, it doesn't register with me, and I stand with the Commissioners and, and what the letter that they put out. And many other people did too, and many other people are just afraid to speak out. But the reason I wanted to talk to you today was about the fireworks issue in Clickatuck County and the lack of a fireworks ban. And I feel that, I've heard the Sheriff's Department talk about this before. I heard the undersheriff talk about it on the radio, and today he spoke about it again. I feel like they don't want to take responsibility for this. They want to blame it on everything but themselves, these fires that are started by fireworks. First, they started with illegal fireworks, scapegoating the tribes for selling illegal fireworks. I just wanted to point out that legal fireworks also start fires, so that's a moot point. They also, I heard the undersheriff say that when you ban fireworks, people run away and they don't report it. Well, the kids that set the fire in Lyle ran away and didn't report it. So the undersheriff literally said these two things back to back, and he didn't even get the irony of that. He also said that banning fireworks is not effective for stopping it. Well, I totally disagree. I live in White Salmon, and we had a ban, and guess what? I didn't hear a firework all night. So apparently it does work. My other concern is friends of mine that live in Lyle that had the fire coming right up to their house did not receive an emergency alert. There's some problem with the emergency alert system that peoples, that don't, that use cell phones are not in the system, so they didn't get the evacuation order. These people own their home. They've lived there for a number of years, and they didn't get an alert, even though the fire was literally across the street from them. So people need to know how to sign up for alerts, and the county needs to get the word out about that. Like on White Salmon Happenings or Golden Dale Happening, so how we can sign up for that, because I want to sign up for that too. So how we can sign up for that, because I want to sign up for that too. I feel that the countywide fireworks ban.
Your, your, your time has elapsed.
Oh, thank you very much for your time.
Okay, we are still in citizen comment. If there is anyone in the room now, you are next, sir. What's that? I am, I'm looking at you. Give us your name and what community you're from.
So, I'm David Harris. I'm from Appleton originally, but spent most of my life there, as you know.
Go ahead, sir.
And I'm deeply troubled by all three of the commissioners' stand on this, especially Dan's because Dan ran on the constitutional ticket.
Absolutely.
And I am, you know, I've known Bob for quite a while. I know him before he was even sheriff. And matter of fact, we had a little confrontation ourselves over him not standing on the Constitution and, 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 but he has, his viewpoint has changed and I really appreciate the stand he's taken, as I said in my article on the paper. And I totally believe and feel that you three commissioners all swore the same oath Bob did. And that oath was not to DRCWS of the state of Washington, that oath was to the Constitution of the United States and any other law to the contrary. It says in your oath, "is not to be held in standing." Says that right in your oath. And when you guys choose to attack Bob on his stand on the Constitution, I feel that is a direct attack on my rights as a citizen. Thank you.
No, we are not going to do that. If we're going to do that, we're going to stop right now. We are going to do this, there are people with a, we are not going to have the back and forth and have other people that are yay, you know, we don't like the sheriff. I'm not going to do that. We don't allow that on any Tuesday. We're not going to do it today. So I'm going to go on now to, thank you for your comments. First, we're going to go back to.
Sherry, off my top.
Okay, Sherry, go ahead. Please give us your name and your community, please.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is Sherry from Housam. And I am happy to see our sheriff and citizens in the, in the presence today for our community. I have brought it up last week to you. I asked where the commissioners felt that the sheriff's statement was intimidating to them or threatening to them. As I read it, it was very clear that everybody wishes to follow constitutional law. And I believe the prosecuting attorney said it well when he said legislative, I'm not going to quote him, but something to the effect, the legislative enacts laws, the executive branch, you know, puts them in place, and then the judicial branch figures the laws out by Constitution. So at this point, I don't see any threat to anybody of being arrested unless there is a law broken. And at that point, if there is a law broken, then our county court system will figure that out. So I am a citizen who is very concerned with the division of our county in believing that our sheriff is doing something wrong when all he is doing is protecting all of our rights, including the elected officials, including all employees of the county. He is protecting everybody's rights by a Constitution and we should all be thankful. So I do not see a threat. I have not seen any arrests in this hyped up, what I believe is being hyped up is not good for the citizenship of our county as we are trying to emerge from the last year. So that's what I have to say. I appreciate a sheriff that represents all of us, including our commissioners and all county employees. And I will hope that you can come together and stop this division of citizens. It's not good for us. So that being said, I also want to say that about under canvas, letting the citizens know, we are still in the process of the appeal and asking that the conditional use permit not be permitted. And that hearing is July 29th for the CIPA appeal and July 30th. So I'm just keeping that in the forefront since this is a big issue in Clickatuck County as Clickatuck County uses a conditional use permit to cite developments that should not be cited and where they're trying to force them to be cited on our citizens. And as we know as citizens, the conditional use permit will be used to cite that Night Roll Solar Project. And the citizens need to be aware that this conditional use permit is used to put in projects and developments that otherwise should not be there by our ordinances, our zoning and our rules. And that is shameful that our county continues to spend our tax money fighting us as citizens to try to impose these.
Husky, your, your time has elapsed. Thank you for your comments. I will go back, we are still in citizen comment into the room in person. Go ahead, sir. Please give us your name and your community if you would, please.
Eric Young, Goldenale out of Cedar Valley. Been a lot of discussion about who's doing what, who's responsible for what. So as a citizen constituent, your boss, I'm putting you to task. Recently, it's been discussed by Health and Human Services that there's going to be some door-to-door stuff going on. Federal government's put out its guidelines for what that entails. Governor Inslee is in discussions right now about creating extra criteria for these door knocks. One of them being discussed in chambers at this, in committee at this point is how a person reacts to the knock on the door, being reportable information. Were they pro? Were they anti? Were they hostile? Along with that, discussion of Governor Inslee's anti-hate policy that he established this year, they're supposed to have the method of reporting any extremist materials that they come across that make them feel uncomfortable. This includes revolutionary era flags that used to fly for our country, excessive nationalism such as the United States flag as well as an armed forces flag. Latest Department of Homeland Security documentation also says any signage that refers to government overreach could be considered extremist behavior. So I'm asking you, when they start doing these, have oversight on what is being asked at every household. And the last thing I'll lead you up because it was released at the same time, Rural Domestic Preparedness Consortium. It's not a government agency, but it's loved by the government. A lot of people from FEMA and DHS are at the top of boards. Specifically look up their program, MGT 433, which is isolation and quarantine of rural populations. It is no mistake that that was released at the same time this door knocking solution was announced in the news as well. Look at the criteria, look at the questionnaires that they're going around asking households for, it has some oversight over it. That's all I'm asking. It's your job because it eventually always deals with funding. And that is specifically where you guys get involved with this.
Cool. I will ask a clarifying question.
Sure.
In your, who is doing the door knocking? What agency or organization?
Right now.
I can tell you as a commissioner, we, to my knowledge, we are, we are unaware, it is, it is no department in this county that I'm aware of.
The federal Health and Human Services is directing this to go out to the state health departments. A lot of states don't have a manpower, so they're also researching volunteer organizations to do the same thing. They're not confrontational, they don't have a van with shots out there going around with them, but that's the direction is being led.
See, I have not been, heard about this from our public health department, our employees that we have budget oversight from, but I will watch.
Yeah, appreciate you.
Okay, I will go, we still have a few minutes left of citizen comment. I will go to the Zoom folks. Is there anybody, if you wish, please raise your hand, unmute yourself, get our attention.
Ashley Cooper.
Okay, Ashley Cooper, I don't see you, but go ahead, Ms. Cooper.
Hi, my name is Ashley Cooper. Can you hear me?
Yes, please state your, your, where you're from for the record, please.
I live in the Goldenale city limits.
Thank you, go ahead.
My statement is that the Clickatuck County Board of Commissioners are completely ignorant to the US and Washington state constitutions with the release of their letter. All of them need to get educated before spewing ignorance. In my opinion, Sheriff Songer is the only official in Clickatuck County that has not violated his oath of office. I'm going to read from the Washington state constitution. Article one, section one says that political power, all political power is inherent in the people and governments derive their just powers from the consent of the governed and are established to protect and maintain individual rights. Article one, section two, supreme law of the land, the US Constitution is the supreme law of the land. And it also states that any laws passed in violation of the Constitution is null and void. You were all elected by the people as our representatives. You took an oath to uphold the US and Washington state constitution. All of the citizens matter, not just county employees or public health employees. You work for we, the people, so start acting like it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have two minutes left. I'll let go three, go ahead.
May I allot my time to somebody who got cut off short?
Sure. I see them do that on C-SPAN, so it's.
So, obviously, my name is Morgan Gamble. I'd like to read the Fourth Amendment. The right of the people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures shall not be violated and no warrants shall issue but upon probable cause supported by oath or affirmation and particularly describing the place to be searched and the persons or things to be seized. Talking about this door-to-door operation that will be happening, been brought together by the president and pushed down to states, obviously hasn't gotten to a county level yet because it's still in works. Now, I have a question to the board of commissioners here. What would you guys expect the sheriff to do if they are coming house to house, writing down that information and asking us our information? Clearly states in there, as a courtesy, Mr. Christopher was nice enough to hand out a Constitution. I'd like to give him one back.
Include your comments, sir. And we are done with citizen comment. Let me stop this. Okay, we will move on in our agenda. Our next item on the agenda is public hearings, public meetings, and bid openings. We have a public meeting to consider approval of boundary line adjustment, BLA. You're, you're free to stay, it's always a public meeting. 2021-04 parcel number 05-17-2956-003 and 05-17-2965-00300 located in the Goldenale vicinity. The applicants are Michael and Nicole Ross. I will start with a brief staff review. Denise.
Boundary line adjustment, BLA 2021-04 is a proposal to adjust the common property line between parcels.
Just a minute, I'll have the clerk ask people to keep it down. We do still have other business to get done. Thank you.
Parcels that you just mentioned.
Yes, notice I did that for you too.
Thank you. Is in the Goldenale vicinity. Applicants, Michael and Nicole Ross. The administrative review of this BLA has been completed, signatures have been obtained from the road health planning and treasurer's office. All conditions of preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds that it's in the public's interest to approve this boundary line adjustment, a motion will be needed to grant final approval of BLA 2021-04 applicant, Michael and Nicole Ross.
Thank you. Any questions or clarifications for staff items? I don't, anything from you, Commissioner Anderson?
I don't have any questions or comments. I'm good with it. I'll let Dan make the motion.
Thanks. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve boundary line adjustment, BLA 2021-04 parcel numbers 05-17-2956-003, backslash 00 and 05-17-2965-0003, backslash 00, located in Goldenale vicinity. Applicants, Michael and Nicole Ross.
I will second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion, the second, granting final approval to the boundary line adjustment. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Anderson votes aye, motion passes. Yeah.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda with all seven items.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the consent. Any discussion on consent? Hearing none. Who said, I made it. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anderson votes aye, motion passes. Brings us to payments and approvals.
Pay estimate.
Pay estimate.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve pay estimate number one, the final for James Dean Construction Incorporated in the amount of $72,484.00 excluding $3,624.20 in retaining for $68,859.80 is due to the contractor for the road built grade.
I will second the motion.
I have a motion, a second, on pay estimate number one to, and final, to James Dean Construction Incorporated. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Anderson votes aye, motion passes.
Bill. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the accounts payable warrants in the amount of $621,947.07 and the payroll benefit warrants in the amount of $776,538.35 for the date ending July 12, 2021.
I will second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on paying the bills. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to let you know that Sharon Carter is online as well as Kathy Fitzpatrick.
Okay, good. Okay, we're running a little ahead of schedule.
Do a great signature on this.
Was that Dan?
I'm ahead of the door. I'll fill for you, yeah. It's just, she's your official signature today.
Yeah.
I figured you'd have it down by now.
Okay, so our next item of business is miscellaneous report, senior services director, Sharon Carter, and McCann Mobility Manager, Kathy Fitzpatrick, discussing concerning the gorge regional transit strategy. We are running a little ahead of schedule, so I will look to folks. Do you, you want to get started? Are you expecting any other folks to join that we want to wait for?
I think we're ready to get started.
Okay. Go ahead, Sharon.
Okay, so I provided as part of the packet, just our, today, the, the hope is to review the, there's a foundations, foundations memo that came out of work from the gorge regional transit, transit strategy phase one, which started in 2019, and that was through support from both Washington State Department of Transportation and the Oregon Department of Transportation. They provided funding for a planning process to kind of establish more of a regional transit vision for the mid Columbia gorge region, which includes, in this particular region is Skamania and Clickatuck County on the Washington side, and then on the Oregon side, Hood River, Wasco, and Sherman Counties. And those, you know, gorge translink, which is, consists of those transportation providers. Through that our, our five county region were participated as well as numerous other. Stakeholders and folks providing feedback regarding. You know, transportation in the gorge, both looking at, you know, goals, priorities, and planning. Again, recognizing it more as a region and trying versus segmenting everything out so much since. Obviously, we cross over to the Oregon side for many of our essential services even. And, and then there's obvious growth and. Transit that's needed coming to this direction with folks that are accessing recreation and tourism activities. Throughout the gorge. So the part of what came out of this phase one of this project was to actually. Develop a vision statement as well as goal areas and kind of come to a consensus in that those work groups, which. Obviously made it a bit more challenging. We started out in-person meeting. And then converted to Zoom meetings and had a lot of different participants. Throughout the process and then a lot of work that went into trying to evaluate and synthesize information from the various. Transportation plans from all of the different counties and providers in the region. And so part of what, you know, Kathy and I wanted to come today was one presenting this. Foundations memo that outlines what kind of the proposed vision for transit in the gorge as well as goal areas. And determine whether this was something that our, the Board of County Commissioners feel like it does encompass what. You see, or if you have additional feedback or comments and changes that you see, and then obviously. If this is something that you're still, you know, supportive of myself as the Senior Services Director and Director over. Our Mount Adams Public Transportation Service to continue working with the regional partners in the next phase. Which is phase two and, and that funding has been secured again through grants through. WASDOT and ODOT. And so I think I provided the foundations, the full foundations memo to you. I don't, for a review, but on page six, and they're not numbered. He just said about the sixth page in of the actual foundations memo. There's, at the top of the page, it starts with proposed vision statement. And this is, gives essentially this work that's gone on since twenty nineteen in terms of coming up with. What we see as a proposed vision statement for again, this regional transit strategy and then the goal areas. So the proposed vision statement that was, has been drafted is public transit supports thriving. Columbia River Gorge communities by providing access to critical services. Higher education, jobs, and outdoor recreation while protecting the natural wonders of the gorge. And then our goal areas are specifically in. Community and economic vitality, high quality service and experience, environmental stewardship, and financial viability. And then within each of those. Goal areas, there are specific. Bullet points related to what we see as that's important accomplishing in those, those particular areas. So rather than, I'm not going to read those to you, but I, I guess the question is, did you have? Any question or comments or differences of opinion related to what has been outlined in this found foundations memo?
I don't. I, to me, I, I don't have any issues with our current. Transit other than, you know, what we can fund when we get towards the budget. No promises, but I think most of that that you're talking about is, is, is grant funded. It's not necessarily counted, but county funded anyway, correct?
Correct. I mean, and, and, you know, our current funding, you know, specific to Mount Adams Transportation. Has county funds, you know, provided in terms of match for those grants. And we've always, in terms of any time, you know, pursued grants, that's obviously with approval from the board. And outlining what, what kind of financial responsibility there is in this. This is why, you know, one of the key goal areas within this foundations memo does. Address financial sustainability and Kathy will probably attest to the fact that I have a tendency to constantly bring up. The financial viability and ongoing support.
Thank you for that. You're, you're listening to us well.
That's the thing is, as we start getting, we don't know, I mean, I guess I'll speak for myself personally. I don't know what this budget cycle is going to mean, other than we've got to find. One point five to two point five million dollars somewhere. So I hate to give anybody in any department, any kind of promises or guarantees. When I don't, we haven't hammered down on the budget. Of course, I don't want to lose any programs or any services, but. Until we really hammer in on those, I can't guarantee that anyone or. Budget isn't going to have some, some number reduction.
Yeah, and I, I think this is one of the key things, again, that I know Kathy probably will attest that constantly comes out of my. My mouth is, is how, you know, how are we going to pay for this? And, and this isn't something, you know. So the foundations memo isn't about saying the board saying, oh, yes, we're ready to. Put all kinds of money towards whatever you think you want in terms of gorge regional transit. It's just saying that these definitely are, you know, goal areas, these seem to align with what we think are beneficial to the citizens of. You know, Clickatuck County and the Columbia River Gorge. And that part of the work in phase two will be to identify those gaps and needs and, and who maybe can fill those. Because it may, again, and that's something, it may not be. Clickatuck County, Mount Adams Transportation. It may be some other. Entity or something that we support applying for funding or seeking. Funding and support to then provide service in our area so our citizens can benefit, but not necessarily tie. Clickatuck County to, to funding it. So this, this definitely, this particular. Strategic planning and review isn't again about tying the county into a commitment. It's more. Wanting to just look at whether the vision and the goals and items seem to line up with. What citizens have communicated maybe to the board and what you see is beneficial for the county itself. But again, not signing on to. Any specific commitment other than, I guess, your approval for myself and or my staff participating. In these regional strategic planning sessions related to, to transportation in the board.
Okay, Sharon, I'm, I'm going to stop you for just a second. In, in our zeal to move through our agendas so quickly. We did, I did not give an opportunity. We did pass a consent agenda, which I understood there was somebody. From the Juvenile Department that wanted to introduce themselves and we, we've already approved that, obviously.
Right. I don't, I don't want to take your time.
No, no, that's okay. We're actually, we were running ahead of schedule and we were just, generally, we do let folks, if, if they've got an item on the consent agenda. They could speak to it if they wish. Although usually they, if it's just going to get approved, then what do I need to talk about?
Yeah, well, I just want to have the opportunity to introduce myself to Mr. Christopher, Mr. Anderson. I am the program manager for the CASA program and so.
And the name is?
A Florida Quin and Special Advocate.
No, I'm saying. Your name.
My name is Ashley Bryant. Yeah, so we, we just had the opportunity.
And then the other thing, you have to pull that down so I can recognize the face with the name. And then I'll let you put it back up.
Also, I was going to say, I wanted to do a better job about being the face of the CASA program.
So I'll never remember the name if you don't give me the face for a quick sec.
Yeah. I don't like these things anyway, so gladly. But yeah, I hadn't met you or Mr. Anderson yet. I had been in here to address the board. One time it was for a department. Update with Mr. Barker and we were asking for permission to put CASA signs for advertising out on the, on the lawn, I'm sure you remember. So, yeah, we got a new grant and it was approved. And so I just wanted to come in here and introduce myself, answer any questions you guys, you might have. So, and I apologize, I didn't understand that that's how it works.
Yeah.
My only experience was sitting in here with Larry and we actually.
Yeah.
Addressed you guys.
Right.
Anyway.
I don't have any questions. I mean, it's an important program, so I don't ever not have my support for that.
And I want to, I will make myself available to join Mr. Barker when he does his department update.
Yeah, that would be really helpful, I think, especially with, you know, as we, you know, there's changes in the.
Some of us got to learn a few things.
Yeah. Some of us forgot what we used.
Absolutely.
Are, are you, are you in the Golden Dale office every day?
Ashley, are you at the Golden Dale office every day?
We, no. Short answer, no. We just recently agreed to a contract to help Skamania CASA program also. So we have a satellite office at the Pioneer Center within the Juvenile Department. And we also have, I want to say satellite office, but they don't actually have a physical office in Skamania. So we split our time between two counties.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for coming.
Okay, well, I, I can't get Zoom to work, so I can't see you, but I'll send you an email and, and try to meet up and, and say hello sometime soon.
Okay, thank you.
This is Commissioner Anderson, just so you know.
For your time.
All right. Thanks, Ashley. All right, I'm sorry, Sharon. As I said, I apologize. I, but we were, we were in our zeal to move through the agenda.
Well, normally, there's only, the only people in the room are people that are, you know, for this, so I just assumed it was everybody full of, of the comment. They were just sticking around to see what was going on.
Yeah, okay, continue. And, and I know, is Kathy going to go? I do have some.
One quick question, I have to leave it to you. You're going to have two bus runs in Clickatuck County, one Mount Adams and one this one? Or is this one bus system that you're adding to them?
It's the same bus system.
Community, so Hood River is going to drive across into White Salmon. We're going to link up into Golden Dale. You can get on the bus and drive it to Portland if you want. It's different transportation groups.
So what's this lady wanting?
If we buy into the regional package or not.
Okay, so right now, Mount Adams only goes to, sorry.
It'll go to White Salmon and it goes across into the Dells.
So it goes through, we have two dedic, we have, whatever those are called, Sharon, the dedicated route is from Golden Dale to the Dells via down through Wishram and.
And it pays for itself.
And it is, it, well, does it pay for itself? And that's, as you guessed from our question about the, you know, the financial susta- sustainability of things is really important.
As from Salem, they never paid for them.
No, they never, yeah, everybody knows.
I was wondering if this, if this smaller community, if you were able to charge more to get, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
What's?
I don't know that you could ever charge a fare.
A fare that covered the cost.
Would cover the cost of public transit without making it twenty-two dollars a rider.
So even if it go regional.
It's the, no additional, it's just tying, it's just coordinating with the other transit.
So you can buy one bus pass that works here or Hood River. You can get on a longer.
Yeah, you have to just keep switching.
Take you to the Veterans Administration Office in Portland if you want to do hopping for both of us.
Yeah.
So.
Sharon, Sharon, have you given us the ridership numbers on the fixed route program that we talked about last week or last month?
Yeah, no, I have not sent you those from, because you wanted the ones from two thousand nineteen since we were suspended during the pandemic.
Yes.
Yeah.
For the ridership numbers.
I have to still get those over to you.
Thank you.
It was towards this.
Sharon, I have that, that great graph that shows your numbers. I can. Send that to you again. You probably forgot it, but.
Yeah, if you want, if you can, I, yeah, I just.
Yeah, that was a nice, it was a nice graph that we put together for February, our February meeting last year. And it showed all of your two thousand nineteen numbers, which, you know, climbed precipitously until you had some full buses.
Yeah.
Two thousand nineteen. Yeah, it was really, really encouraging.
And I, and I will say from my perspective, I was, I was very pleasantly surprised at the, the level of ridership and how that grew up until the pandemic. Obviously, and so we are, we're just in the midst of restarting and I think. I mean, there'd be every reason to believe ridership will again, you know, be on that curve again, once people are used to it and it's moving around. So people are moving around again, so. Okay, sorry for this joint. Go ahead, Sharon or Kathy, whoever is next.
Well, and I, I guess one of the things is just making sure to address the fact that what we're looking at doing is identifying. You know, again, more of how we can work together in the region to make it more seamless because the gorge is really more, you know. People living in the gorge don't necessarily refer to, it's, it's hard to have it piecemealed. And it would be nice, again, just like with the gorge pass that's available for the fixed route and that shared fare structure option. There to make it more seamless for people to ride those services. That's kind of, I think, what. You know, more of this work in terms of looking at the gorge as a region and making, it makes it more, makes more sense, you know, planning wise. As well as financially, because we benefit from, you know, we wouldn't necessarily be able to do a gorge pass if it wasn't for. The partners like CAT and some of those that have more resources to be able to, to kind of put towards. That and, and with, you know, kind of the funds that they're getting for folks that are coming in for tourism and that too. So I think we benefit from some of those pieces and, and, and a more coordinated approach rather than having it very segmented. But I guess that's, that goes back to the board in terms of, you know, is this something that you're, you know, supportive of in terms of. Work along the lines of developing and supporting. You know, transit and public transit and support, you know, in, in the gorges of region. And, and what we've outlined in this foundations memo.
Yeah, I would say for me, I did, I sat down, I had saw excerpts of it previously. Through the McCad, my participation on the CAD. I did sit last night and read it. Even though I had no electricity because of the fire at Lisle, my iPad was fully charged, so I could do my own work anyway. And, you know, I really appreciate how much work has gone into this. And I don't see anything in it that I can't support. The only cat, and I, I support, as I have supported, you know, staff continuing to work with. With your counterparts in the region, because we really are a region and, you know, the only caveat I always make is just the fiscal piece of it is. You know, that we always have to figure out, you know, how, how to pay for as far as the county share of, of things, but. You know, especially as I had said earlier, I was pleasantly surprised at the level of ridership. Because I really, I just didn't really think we were going to see that when, you know, I, I remember Sharon, when you came in and said, oh, I want to put in, we have this opportunity for this grant for these fixed routes. And I was thinking, I guess we'll cross that bridge if we, you know, just because you submit for a grant doesn't mean you're going to get it. And then although Sharon has a real knack for, she's, she's a good, she's a good grant writer, apparently, because then he came back with. Oh, guess what? That big, that big thing, I, we got it. Of course, now you have to put in your match for it and. It's twenty, is it twenty percent match, Sharon, on that one? Twenty, is it twenty percent match Sharon on that one?
Yeah.
It's rat rat, so it's a, it's, it's some dollars. How much is that in dollars?
I know what, I, I will have to.
Did I just see everybody shudder at the same time?
Yes, it's, it's a, it's, it's a significant hundred, probably.
So I, yeah.
Okay, Sharon, don't answer.
Yeah.
plead the fifth.
Plead the fifth, that's fine.
Well, because we, we have the dialer ride, which is a fifty fifty, and then the eighty twenty for the fixed, but I, you know, I don't wanna throw out the.
Don't do that, yeah.
Because we just have the award letters and honestly, my brain, I've been working on twenty twenty state auditor stuff and um, so I can, I can do a summary again of specifically what that is and shoot that over in an email. Um, but where, you know, that twenty percent, actually, we've been fortunate and again with work with, you know, McCad and, and CAT and the um, the commuter pass within Situ um receiving revenue, you know, the, the purchase of those employer passes is a big chunk of money that addressed making up for a, a substantial portion of that match funding in terms of from the county. So, you know, there's different ways that we're using our funds also from some of our other um programs that are able to be used as match as well, so first, last year is a hard gauge for much of anything with, with COVID. There was a lot of interesting um and additional grant funds though, so uh, but one, I can, I can give the specific amount again, but I, not off the top of my head.
Okay, yeah, like I said, I was, I was pleasantly surprised because I thought, you know, you would do it for the two years. And then we would take a look at it and there's, you know, three people riding the bus and so thanks, but no thanks. It was really, you know, it was a cool experiment, but it didn't work, and that's not what happened. And so.
But just by knowledge, if you can give me the amount of the grant for both the fixed route and then our and the amount of the grant for the dialer ride in our match, just for my own personal knowledge, so I can plug that into the back of my head, that would be awesome.
Okay. I will send that over.
By all means, a part of our grant is uh in Situ, you know, fork it out twenty-two grand or something, feel free to make note of that as well, because that doesn't really mean we're paying a hundred if they're paying twenty-two.
Yeah, there's some revenue.
Yeah. I'm just trying to get.
And, and also, um, do you have the ridership numbers on that agreement with In situ? Is that just included in with your regular route transit numbers or is that separate?
The In situ riders, we just included, we just count boardings, anybody. We didn't specify who. We did have some data specifically from the hop through a pass that In situ um was using as the electronic employee pass. Um. I would have to double check. I know we were tracking some numbers specific to In situ writers because we were kind of giving feedback to In situ about that. Um. And if you wanted to know those, I can, I can specify that as well.
That would be great. And whether those numbers are included in the, in the fixed route numbers or if that's separate, that's good to know as well for when we're looking at the numbers.
Okay.
Sharon, I do a presentation to In situ every year and I do include um a, an estimate. It's, it's an estimate, but I think Norma and the bus drivers are pretty good at.
Yeah, they were tracking.
Yeah, at tracking that, so um, so I, I'll send that to you as well, because I do, I put it in a presentation form every year.
But it'll be less so with the transition to the gorge paths. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, well, of course, it's not, it won't include last year because they, they were.
Yeah.
And they were last year.
But, yeah.
But the previous year.
We just, we just based on just some of the feedback from around the West End, we did have a number of, of different um customers, you know, um, of In situ, not employees per se, but folks that were visiting from other countries and that, that, that definitely used our service, you know, and they paid cash or uh or with um a, a hop through pass um that, that didn't fall under In situ, but we, we definitely during the summer months had a lot of international folks that, that were riding too, that are very comfortable with using public transit, so.
Yeah, and, and what surprised me though, Sharon, is that I think you had said um that the, your Goldendale route to the Dells was just as popular um and maybe some runs were even more so. Am I remembering that?
Actually, especially outside of the summer months, I mean, you definitely could see um definite uptick during the kind of prime tourist season for the West End. Um, but then for Goldendale to the Dells route, we, we were exceeding, you know, ridership out, even beating out what was going on in uh from White Salmon to Hood River, so. Um, but definitely the pandemic, you know, is kind of, it's, it's getting on track after the shutdown. Um, and uh but yeah, we were at points in time where we were concerned, we, we were full, which so then it was.
Problem to have.
Right, yeah, so.
Yeah, yeah, and just talking to some of the riders, I know that um, I know some of them, y- you know, a lot of them were, were employees of, of businesses and healthcare organizations like One Community Health in the Dells. Um, I know talking to, because I would do tabling a lot at the community college, a lot were students riding the bus from Goldendale to access the community college there in the Dells.
Were there other aspects of the, the transit strategy you wanted to highlight or? Um, I, only observation I would make looking at the map, and this is just to observe it, and there's nothing to be done for it, was you'll notice the, you know, the regional transit and the different, you know, Hood River and Wasco, Skamania and, and Clickitat, you know, there's, there's transit opportunities that run up both sides of the river on the Oregon and Washington side until you get to White Salmon, and then there's a gap between there's, you know, if we wanna go, we have to go down over to Oregon and around and back over and then down, and that's just a future, you know, if someday when the, if, if transit grows up all the way throughout the gorge, that there is a population here that it's, it's really difficult to connect those two dots together. I realize that, but I just, I just observed here on there, yeah, notice there's no link here between.
The Lyle sits right in the middle there.
There's a whole.
Lyle is all alone.
But you said White Salmon, I'm like, why is that?
Yeah, Dallas Port, between Dallas Port and White Salmon.
Salmon, right, so like, you know, say Lyle.
Cover Lyle.
My hometown is, is.
It's close to fire. Hey, hey, Sharon, have you had any discussions with SDS about, um, I know SDS is trying to recruit people out of Goldendale to work at the Sawmill? Have you had any discussions with them about maybe on that fixed route from Goldendale to White Salmon so that people could work their shifts there?
Yeah, the issue is we don't have a connection between Golden Dale and White Salmon. We go Dallas Port over to the Dells. Um, it's kind of a workaround, but whether or not, um yeah, I, I just heard their advertising, I think the swing shift is where they're meeting. Right?
Uh, every shift, actually.
Okay, because it sounded like there, definitely the radio ad was pushing for a swing shift. Um.
Here, I'll get my.
With the, the return time and that too, um, I'm, I'm assuming their swing shift is more like a, you know, like a three to four or something. But I have not spoken with them, but that's something maybe Kathy too, we could talk about just even.
I just wrote that down. That's, that's how our conversation started with In situ. We didn't have the Portland to Hood River, you know, it was just the Columbia Gorge Express that ODOT was running and so it was talking to In situ and, and In situ reached out to us, really, um, at, at the very beginning and said, look, you know, we're, we're having to fund this, this private shuttle and um, and so that's, that's where it started and now we've, you know, they're, they're buying passes every year and and they're getting their employees to, to work at both campuses in Hood River and Benjen. So that's where it starts, definitely, you know, some.
Yeah, you know, and whether or not there's even an option for some kind of van pooling or something that ness- isn't necessarily, you know, the fixed route, because I don't know, again, some of those alternative shifts are a bit harder to look at, because I think that's.
Right.
The um fruit uh companies and things like that and some of the different shifts, it's, it's looking at, there, there's some van pool, car pool options and things like that to look at accessing some other support, especially with fuel prices, you know, continuing.
To include. So McCad does support a van pool program and I can um, you know, try to access um other dollars that, that subsidize van pool programs for employers, so that that's a great, but yeah, Sharon, definitely we should connect with SDS. The, see what their needs are.
And then the other question I have is, is do we still have the van that's down there right across the Hood River Bridge at the parking lot on our side? And do we have numbers for how many, how often that van gets used?
Now, what, what vans?
There was always a ride share van uh on the Washington side parked there down by uh the Chamber of Commerce Building, or there used to be.
Was it, did it go to the Dells, to the, to the um, to the dam? Was it Army Corps of Engineers?
No, it was, it's, it always, it, it sits there and it says ride share on the side of the van and it's always sitting there.
Oh, and it's just sitting there?
Yeah, I don't know who that is.
Yeah, they, they have, the Army Corps of Engineers has, has several van pool um programs. Uh, Google has one as well. Um, there are some that are going into Portland from here. But I don't know any, I don't know any of them that are actually not being actively used.
When I get back into town, I'll, I'll take a picture of the van and send it to you, Sharon.
Okay, and try to, I guess, I, I know I wasn't sure who the one, there was one that was always in the main county lot, you know, where the new building is going up. Um that was actively used. They did an, I can't remember where they were associated with, if they were Army Corps of Engineer folks, there was a, um, and they, they met early in the morning and worked there and van pulled together and, and then came back in the evening. Um, and I don't know where they're parking now. Um, but yeah, I can check into that and see who that is. Because I'm not sure, I'm not aware of one, because we're I, I'm not really sure, you know, in terms of some of those, how they, where they've accessed them, if it's through CTRAN out of Vancouver sometimes as well.
Because they can subsidize those.
Yeah. So we'll check into that and.
Okay, just a question. Thank you.
I think, I think the, the one question and maybe Sharon was, was ready to move on to that is the, the, the last question would be if um how, how the, how the county commissioners want to engage in the phase two of, of the strategy? And, and we've, you know, we've had um a lot of engagement through the RTC and then, and then through updates with, with the McCad Board. Um, but is, if there's, and then of course Sharon has been giving you updates. If there's, um, and I know that RTC plans to continue um and to even engage even deeper into this, this strategy um project and, and actually would like to propose adopting it into the next update of the Human Services Transportation Plan, Planning Process, which will be kicking off pretty soon, that next update. Um, but, but I'd like to know if the county commissioners would like to engage in any other way um as we, as we move over through this next phase through this next year.
Okay, I would, I would actually look to my seatmates uh if, if they wanted to have, you know, additional engagement. I you know, I've had engagement being on McCad Board and on the RTC as well, and so I'm not a, no, I, I feel very engaged in this, but I don't know. No. I mean, I, I think we feel very well briefed by the, you know, with Sharon's involvement in this, but I guess if there was a commissioner that wanted to really dive in on it, then uh I think there's an opportunity for that as well.
Yeah, I personally, I, I think Sharon's uh doing a marvelous job. I have a lot of irons and a lot of fires and don't know that I can pick another iron right now.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson, thoughts? Commitment?
Uh, I'm fully supportive of what Sharon's working on, but uh like Dan said, we all have a lot of irons in the fire.
Yeah, I'm just trying to just have it the iron in the fire.
It's hard to figure out which iron's in which fire at any given moment.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or we'll get it put out.
Yeah, so. So I think that's your answer.
Yeah.
Status is good. Sharon says, yay, thank you so much.
And then I, yeah, and I guess along with that is just, you know, if there's a preference for updates, you know, if it's quarterly or what, you know, I have a tendency to get involved in whatever and not necessarily come unless there's uh an issue or a decision, but if you're wanting to have a more regular update than what I provide is, is quarterly sufficient or?
I would say the quarterly is the best.
All the weeks are good. Your, your feature a little longer than some, but it, it's very educational, so I don't know that getting a more than quarterly would, would be beneficial, but.
So uh Sharon, the one thing, I'm, I'm speaking off the cuff, which is always dangerous, but if I, if I look at ten to fifteen years down the road and White Salmon, Benjen area, even Hood River, the people that are working in that area that are working the service sector jobs, I don't see them being able to afford to live in the area. They're gonna be in Dallas Port, Goldendale and Lyle and that area, probably the Dells too. Um, so keep that in mind. I know we have that gap between where, where Lyle is in the open area with Dave, but I see Dallas Port to White Salmon being kind of like the Aspen situation in the future, and you could probably actually make money, you know, giving people those rides for the service sector jobs in the future, so just keep that in mind. And, and I think that, you know, having that conversation with SDS might be a, a very good inroad into where that could be and whoever takes over SDS in a few months.
And that's definitely um the, that connection is, is on a high priority list for, for me, you know, in terms of Mount Adams and and having the ability to be able to provide that additional connection there, um, rather than, again, having people to go circulate over the Oregon side and then back over again, I mean it. Um, and it's just really been more of a financial challenge and, and, and securing those, so we um we're excited that we are able to secure funding, you know, to continue this route because we were kind of told we would probably never get the funding that we got originally to start the routes from the main, you know, population centers and so um uh now that we're within the consolidated, you know, program and we've, you know, showing some track record and I think as we can grow this and, and I think with the gorge transit pass, that's gonna help that along as well, that um it's, it's easier um to obtain funding for an existing project and a new one too, and that additional leg would, would be something that could be relatively easily added in though, hopefully, um in the future, so. Yeah, and, and.
So my other question, Sharon, is. So my other question, Sharon, is once you get this funding the first time, is it? High likelihood that you'll be able to get it moving forward because they don't want to lose services once you create a program? Or what does this look like for the future? Are we going to be expected to take over at one, some point?
Well, you know, we're, um, the dial rights service under the consolidated program has received funding for, you know. Twenty plus years ongoing. Obviously, there's challenges at different points in time. Depending on state and federal budgets, um, obviously because we, you know, we've indicated we're able. To manage federal or state money. That gives us more options. It does create. More work sometimes, but it's how we can secure and get that and, and we're able to leverage. Funds that we get from other programs such as, you know, the Medicaid transportation brokerage contract as well as. Our senior transportation, um, grant funds. Those are able to be leveraged as match and that. So typically it's usually secure, but it is still. Um, not guaranteed from biennium to biennium, um. But for the most part, we've been very successful in that, but, but it, nothing is, is absolute. Because it is, there is a ranking system and horse payers, it just depends, you know, in terms of additional applications. But, but typically, you know, the regional transportation council also write, you know. Typically, the, the process for ranking projects is usually given the high ranking scores to. Continuing existing projects. So we usually have a leg up in that regard.
Perfect, thank you.
Do you have anything else that you?
Wanted to highlight? No?
I don't. I just appreciate the, the amount of time you've spent on this and, and engaging in one way or the another. Um, I'm really looking forward to, it's, it's just been a really amazing project to work. Across the region, this by state region and with as many by state partners as we've, as, as have been participating. So, you know, employers and, um, and then land managers and of course, you know, the counties, cities, uh, lots of. Lots of staff from the planning departments and public works and, and it's just been a, it's been a great project. And it will truly be the first regional transportation plan that, that this region will have. Of course, our focus on public transportation, but, um, it's just been really exciting. And, and really like, like Sharon said, we're not, we're not going out, uh, we're not going out of our way to, to. To dream up new projects. What we're trying to do is figure out how to leverage what we've got. To be able to, to, to reach our vision. So, so not looking, um, you know, where, where are there pots of money that, that we're not already accessing? And, um, and then how can we work together, you know, those points of coordination and cooperation? That, that really do, um, just, you know, give, give us an economy of scale that, that just, you know, decreases. The, the rate, the, the fees for, um, service for our residents and just, just makes it, makes it so much more. So much less expensive to operate.
Okay, well, thank you both for that, for the dialogue and the presentation and. And, uh, go forth and do good things.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I do see, we, we're running a little ahead of schedule.
Did I hear, did I hear you use the go forth and do good work line?
I did, I, I, I. Yeah, it is. I think that was actually mine first. You stole it from me, so.
Well, I got it from Dave McClure, so either he stole, you stole it from him or, or he gave it to you.
He may have gave it, given it to me, or I borrowed it, loaned it, loaned it, yeah. So, um, I see Erin is in the house.
Can I do my, I don't know what order we're in. Can I do my update first?
Yes, of course.
Water thing.
Yep.
Which is basically any, oh, actually it's gonna be.
We can do our update first.
Yeah, it'll be.
The agenda is ours, so we can, we want to.
Still tilting, so whatever.
I know. It's hard to pay attention, but.
He's the boss.
I do, I don't know.
See, that's why you're supposed to get him emailed to you.
Hey, you shush, you're not here to defend yourself.
Here I can.
Erin was diligent enough to email it to me, so thank you, Erin.
I heard you were out of town.
Oh.
Told that you wanted it by email, so. Anyway, alright, um, I'm just gonna do a fairly quick overview because we have Board of Health on Thursday and I don't want to.
Go over it again, again.
Yeah, I would add the same discussion 48 hours from now, less than 48 hours, so. Um, environmental health, I gave you the document to share. We've seen places many, um, site valves and permits. Last month that we did a year before, so we're continuing to be really busy. With those, um, I think mostly heavy on the, on the west side, not as much on the east side, but definitely both sides have been really busy with that, so. Uh, we're going back to doing food inspections, which we had been doing, but just not as vigorously, I guess, so. Kelly's out doing those, uh, we're watching for algae blooms. We've posted warning signs already. It looked like. We have some samples sent to the state to identify what type of algae it is. Um, and then they're monitoring Roland and Horse Thief Lake, but haven't seen any algae there yet. We're doing the mosquito trapping, uh, we've been shipping samples once a week. They have seen West Nile and Walla Walla County, I think is the closest, um, to us so far to date. And we haven't seen any in our county. Uh, today there's one out at Horse Thief. I know we've had them out in Alderdale, Trout Lake. Um, so they're trying to just rotate sites around the county, um, every week.
Is that all they're testing for is West Nile or are they doing other tests on those mosquitoes as well?
They're doing other tests, but that just is kind of the. It's been identified in close proximity to our county, so they're, they're keeping an eye on that. Like Walla Walla is close to our county. I don't know if we consider that close proximity or not. It's in the area.
How far do mosquitoes fly?
I.
The ones we're testing for only have a five mile range.
When you. Upwind or downwind.
When you do these from now on, could you break it down between west side and east side? Cause I, I would be curious to keep up to date with what.
I don't know. Yes.
He was saying yes.
I mean, it's.
You could do.
Yes, no, we're working on revising that. And actually Athena is helping us to develop some better metrics, so. Or better looking in color items, so. Um, we are redoing, we're not redoing, we're revising our Skoomania County, um, contract for food services. So you'll probably see that come across your desk in the next couple of weeks because we provide their food program for them. Um, so we met with them, we're revising, there was some language that needed to be updated and changed. And so we are doing that, working with the PA to make sure it's all, it's all correct.
And our, our fee we collect is adequate to cover the cost of doing the program.
Will, will we get?
The answer is yes.
Yes.
Or it will be.
Yes, or it will be. Yes.
Okay.
And that's one of. Yes, no, that's all right. And so, yeah. Um, but we're looking at all that. So that's part of all of.
I mean, I want to be a good neighbor, but.
I, I don't have the contract in front of me, but I think it says plus a certain percentage, so.
So it's cost plus administrative.
Yes, yeah, yeah, so. Yes, I'm, anyway, I'll double check that, but no, I am not doing. Work for free. I mean, we do lots of work for free, but.
Nobody ever comes over from Underwood for any health department services.
No, never. That's just, that, no, that's a big, that's a big part of our.
River, you know, jumping.
These are restaurants. Actually, we have quite a few WICs, um, a lot of our WICs comes from there.
From Underwood?
We don't like Skoomania County, they come for immunization, yeah. We get a lot of, we get a lot of business. Yeah, you get a lot of business from Skoomania County, so it's in our best interest that we, you know, close with them. We do have two contracts with them. One is the food contract, which we're working on revising. The second one is for, um, their environmental health services that we're gonna, once we get the food one done, we're gonna revisit that one and look at what that looks like and. How are you reimbursed and run through all that stuff. Um, the other contract you'll probably see come through next week is, uh, we have a. I think it's a four-year contract with Tacoma Pierce Health Department, uh, to manage food handler cards. It's the online program, so. Um, you'll see that in your box next week for approval. Uh, it's just a renewal. It doesn't change anything one way or another, but it's, it's coming through, so. Um, on the clinical health side, we do have, um, we have a contract, um, peer counselor leave. So those, that's the program that does the breastfeeding education. Um, the way that WIC has the program set up, they have a lead and then they, then they train. To, um. Two other individuals to kind of, they're considered peers, so someone who is or has recently breastfed. To work with newly breastfeeding mothers. Um, so the lead is just about finishing training. She's gonna start working on. Um, getting ready to hire the, uh, peer counselors. Um, that's all part of our WIC contract. That's all covered under all of that funding. So at some point, you'll probably see, um, requests for those individuals to come through. That's just part of the grant that we get. Uh, it's supposed to have been up and running for years and has not, so just getting back to baseline where we should be, so. Uh, Athena is gonna take her boards next week, so once she passes those, we'll have another full-time nurse, um, and so I think. Hopefully, I was hopeful that we'd be fully staffed for nurses in, uh, July, but it looks like it'll probably be August. We do have one person out on that full week. Uh, we had a family planning. Go ahead, Jake.
Oh, is Athena still doing, uh, other duties as assigned by you, like the, you know? Cause you're saying about the pretty pictures and stuff.
Yeah, no, she's other duties is assigned until her boards are passed. Until she passes.
And then will she still be other duties as assigned or will she just do the rest of her stuff?
Um, I mean, she's awfully skilled. I hate to waste that skill set.
That's what I was thinking.
Just be doing nursing, but she will also assist us. We bought, uh, with the foundational public health money, we did buy her some really nice software. With the understanding that she'd spend, um, I think I told her between four and eight hours a month. Utilizing that software to help us make pretty things.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Something heavy on the keyboard, Lee.
Yeah. So, uh, we did have our family planning and fiscal review last, uh, I think it was two weeks ago. I had anticipated that it would not go well just because it'd been a couple of years since we'd had one. Obviously, there's been a lot of things that have been left by the wayside. Previously, and then with COVID, uh, it would, it was much worse than I had anticipated. Um, we have had a lot of findings and we have 90 days to rectify all of the findings. Most of them are around policy and procedure deficiencies, which I am just positive we had at one point, but no one knows where they went. Or where they are, so there goes all of that. Um, the fiscal and procedural stuff, I'll follow up with. Um, I talked to Greg, he's gonna help me. I just talked to Brenda for a second and we're gonna talk with the CPA too, to kind of see where. Where the documents that they're requesting are and how to rectify what they need, so. Anyway, there is that. And then just basic COVID, we have 989 cases. We're getting pretty close to that 1,000 cases. We only have five active cases right now. So it's been, that's nice. We've only had one, I think, this week, so. We've given 21,000 vaccines as a county, uh, that means 43% of people over 12 have been vaccinated. Uh, that's not nearly enough. Um, I'm really worried about what fall's gonna look like and we can talk about that more on Thursday. So, it's kind of just where we're at with COVID. We're still doing, we just have a slow trickle. We're doing, doing vaccines every week. We'll do outreach as we're requested by groups. And when people have called, we've been able to go out to where they're at and meet them. Um, the nurses have done a fantastic job about if someone's homebound, being able to go out to the home and, and offering them that vaccine, if that's a choice that they, that they wanted.
One thing that was brought up in public comment that I have a question about is, uh, the president's going door to door. With vaccine, do we have a, a plan in this county to do that?
No, because I don't want to get shot.
Yeah.
To be perfectly honest, I don't think it's my business.
Budget, uh, going door to door, so that one's.
No. I.
One less thing for me to get yelled at for.
No, I do not support going to a door to door. I would love for them to come to my house, not my house, my office. Sorry, not my house. Please don't come to my house. Um. No, I just, I just, we don't have the capacity to go door to door. I don't think it's appropriate to go door to door.
I just want to be clear, have you been asked to go?
I have not been asked.
Okay, so let's be clear, again, I'm not.
Yes.
If asked, then it's no. Right.
I don't have the staff.
Right. I, I would agree.
And I have safety concerns for my staff to go door to door in this county.
I would say if asked from the state or if that policy changes, your policy, which I like, uh, please let us know.
Yeah.
Yes, um, no, I just, I just don't feel comfortable sending my staff out to knock on someone's door. Uh, just.
Grocery store waving a needle, that's fine.
Yes, um, I think they're gonna do some outreach to the farmers markets. I think we've made ourselves available in community settings. I don't think it's appropriate to knock on people's houses. So, yeah. That is something they do in a lot of countries. Uh, I just don't think it would work here. In my experience in public health, when we've knocked on people's doors, they've been very unhappy to have us there. Um, I'm referring to cases that I've worked with for something like tuberculosis. Um, we do have to knock on their door. We do have to meet with them every day. They do not want us there. I have had to involve the police in the past and I'm not comfortable. I'm, I'm not comfortable at door to door. That's just.
So Erin, I had a, I had a constituent, uh, ask me, they said, why is their COVID vaccine not going on their yellow card? Why is it just on that little white card? And would you be willing to put it on their yellow card?
Oh yeah, I'd write it on anyone's yellow card if they brought it in. That's not a problem at all.
Okay, so I'll let them know that they can come in and you can write it on their yellow card.
So it's the, it's the, yeah, it's the international vaccine record. Yeah, it's yellow, it's, it's called the yellow card. It's international vaccine record, so.
They didn't need that when you were in school.
Yeah, um, most people that would have that.
Two vaccines.
Yeah, they would travel extensively. That's where you put yellow fever documentation on. The military makes you have those, so it's pretty. Um, there's a lot of people that do have them. There's a lot of people that don't. But yes, I would transcribe that on anyone's yellow card if they brought it in. I have no problem doing that.
It's not, it's not like a red card like you always gotten soccer dance. It's different.
I didn't get many red cards.
Um, the state is working on focusing on working with primary care providers to help with outreach. So more vaccine availability when you go see your primary care provider, helping them have education, have that conversation about whether the vaccine is correct for you or not, so. Um, they are working on that, which is kind of outs, without us in a weird sort of way. But I still work pretty closely with the hospitals and the clinics, so that's.
I'm hearing that people that got the one-shot Johnson and Johnson are now going to get a second of Moderna kind of thing. Have you started seeing that here? People are starting to fear the Johnson and Johnson one shots, so they want a second shot of something else.
Uh, I wouldn't.
You're gonna get it in some places and I'm wondering.
I wouldn't recommend that. I haven't had anyone ask that, but that's, I will.
Are you still expecting a booster in the fall, Erin?
I, I am still expecting that, even though I've noticed in the news lately, there's a lot of waffling back and forth about whether they will or not. Until they definitively say no, uh, I would be remiss if I'm not planning for a booster. Um, I, I don't want to get caught off.
Or a mandate, one of the others, the other.
Yeah. So, um, I, I just think it's irresponsible to not plan for boosters. I'm waiting for the definitive answer. And I'm worried about supplies, so I stocked up. I am working with the hospitals still, um, on, we had some opportunity to get FEMA reimbursements for their vaccine clinics. So I'm working with them to get them that money. Um, I think we talked about it. We'll also get reimbursements for, um, KPH utilizing the fairgrounds. And because the way we wrote the agreement, um. The fairgrounds can charge me a rental fee, which I can get reimbursed through FEMA, so.
We'll do that then.
We did do that, yes. Uh, and I have not actually seen the money yet, but I did submit reimbursement that I think. Uh, was somewhere in the 60 to $80,000 range that will go back into the fairgrounds, so.
Say two point million.
Yeah, I know, right? That would be nice, no?
Fairgrounds.
Yeah. So, um, so that'll bring a lot of money back to the community. It will really help the hospitals and the clinics kind of recoup some of the money that they've lost. Changing their focus from their regular business to work on having these mass vaccine clinics, so. Uh, we did have an employee that's going to transition to another department. I think Rob asked for a verbal approval this morning to. Advertise for that position, and I think. Once I started.
You are still speaking to the auditor?
I did, I just talked to her. She said she was sorry. I said I didn't think so. But no, I would never, it's a good, it's a good opportunity. I would, I would never, I would never hold someone back from that, so. But I think the more we're looking at, as we're coming out of COVID and looking kind of at, going back to the normal business. I think there's going to be potential opportunities for reorganizing what our work chart looks like that will make us more efficient. So we've been taking a really long look at what that might look like, so as those kind of are solidified, I'll definitely let you know. I think we're going to look at changing some duties. There, there are some definite areas for improvement that we've identified, so. I'll let you know once that plan's more solidified. One of the things we're really struggling with is just the grants. It's becoming almost my full-time job and I don't have the bandwidth to just manage grants. It's not the billing. It's the billing, the reporting, the new ones that are coming in, getting the contracts to you. It's, it's, it's becoming more burdensome. By the day, actually, so that's another thing we're going to look at with that kind of rework, so.
Do we hope maybe some of that will lighten up with? You know, is it all around COVID, or some of it's just the regular book of business?
Yeah, yeah. I think it hasn't been managed well in the past. And I thought that.
So this is what the real workload is?
Yes.
Grants, they're always managed by the director and not a staff.
I'm not sure.
Your voluntary.
In the past, that public health department had staff that took care of the. Showers on the budget and the billing and the director did have a hand at preparing the grant agreements. That would come over, but he had a financial person that did all the management and the billing and things like that.
Yeah, so, yes.
So it was at least on the previous work chart?
That is not very smart, but anyway. I'll, I'll put some time into making sure that it's a good fit for what the end goal needs to be and cost-effective at the end of the day. Before I present the final plan, but that's something I'm working on. Questions about any of that? Well, I've got his first department date, so.
I tend to ask my questions while it's happening, otherwise I forget, so.
So then I think just David's going to present the potable water.
Well, I think about a month ago, I sent you a thirteen-page packet that kind of described. Potable water locally and potable water across the state. I'm not sure how many or how much of that you guys have read. Or how much of a dive you want to go into it, but there is an RCW that requires the proof of potable water pertaining to state building code. We don't really have potable water requirements outside of building code, other than the, you know, WAC two-four-six-two-nine-zero. And two-nine-one that oversee group Bs and group A water systems. The RCW also doesn't define what is considered potable or adequate, so those are kind of left up to the counties to determine. Their definition of those two items. The state does define it though, in theirs, which is pretty also broad, which is water suitable for drinking. By the public, so they do have design standards which further clarify what is suitable for drinking. And we have our local policy, and the reason it's a policy now is because the RCW nineteen-two-seven. Already addresses that you can either have potable water through water rights, a letter from a purveyor. Or you can drill into groundwater except well. So I think a couple of questions that come to mind, I know this is really about. Water hauling and cistern use. Right now, cistern use is, is allowed in the county. There's nothing that prohibits it. Except when you want to go for a building permit. You have to demonstrate that your cistern is not only adequate, but you can provide a potable source of water to the home. Right now, our policy is, well, surface water rights allow for domestic use. Or a letter from a public water system, or you can do a shared well with your neighbor, that's also allowed. But you also have to meet the minimum requirements for potability, which right now is passing the call for bacteria analysis and the nitrogen analysis. And even the nitrogen analysis, if you go over the ten point oh parts per million MCO, you can put a. You can record it to the title of your land. Yeah, you can do treatment and then record it to the title of your land, so someone.
So we currently allow cistern, but. Is there a clause in there that the cistern has to be developed or designed by an engineer?
Well, there's no, there's no language that addresses cisterns in our local policy or local ordinance.
So a person that owns the property can set up the cistern and be good to go in our local order.
Yes, until you go for a placement permit or a building permit.
Right, like you could have, what he's saying is, it's, we have a, you could have a cistern. You just, we don't have a place in our code, in our building permit, that that water is suitable to comply with. For you to get a building permit. Like you can have a cistern for watering your lawn, or watering your stock, or whatever, it's not for watering a human.
If, if the end goal was to get that, we would have to change that in our building code to allow that. And get bishops approved as a period.
Well, yeah, there's quite a long process to that. What those look like locally around the state is on, of course, licensed water haulers by. Either the local jurisdiction or the building jurisdiction, sometimes even the public works jurisdiction does that. The, another way for that is they're used to supplement existing systems. So like if you have a well, or if you do rainwater catchment on the west side of the state, which is allowed. Or for any reason that you physically can't put a well in an area like northeast part of the state. So it's usually used to supplement existing systems, not as a sole source of potable water. Adequate for a single-family residence. There's also logistical issues in there about sizing your cistern appropriately, the cost of hauling water. Who's going to haul your water? How much is it? Are you going to do, once a week, you're going to have them come in? Are you going to have them every four weeks? Are you going to treat it before it gets in the house? Are you going to filter it before it gets in the house? Where's the water coming from? Does it come from a public water source? Is it just coming from your neighbor's well? Is it coming straight out of a clicker tat? You know, all those kind of questions that have to be asked. And then you also have the legality part, which unfortunately, we don't have. Our PA here today to talk on that, but there's existing water law, particularly a Hearst decision about, you know. Managing the use of water pertaining to. Legal right to access water is from a homeowner's standpoint, so there's some. Legal issues that we need to ask, not only our prosecuting attorney, but ecology. About basing the basin transfers and if I'm way out in Allardale, is it okay for me to get water from the city of Goldendale? On that basis, so there's a bit more to it. Then just allowing cisterns for potable water, meeting potable water and adequate sources for building permits.
Is there any chance?
Excuse me, was that?
Hey Lee, is, I'm getting a little bit of feedback that's like a whirling sound. Is there, is there somebody that's unmuted?
It's the construction outside. I know it sounds like a smashed helicopter.
Oh, that, that's what you guys are listening to? I'm glad I'm hearing this, the little bit of it.
For over a year now.
Yeah.
Just usually not on Tuesday.
There's also a little bit, there's a, I think DOH and EPA really haven't come to a decision on whether or not they're going to. Consider water haulers as a purveyor either. So the EPA does consider someone who fills up a water tank. And supplies water to a single-family residence as, as a purveyor.
So is that, if they do that, then that, that would need the.
Yeah.
Something from a purveyor, saying, yes, we can supply water.
Right. DOH though, will not recognize water haulers as a potable, an adequate source of, of water. And they won't permit them, so they, if we went down that road, I think we'd have to have something in the language saying that. You know, once it's furnished to the homeowner, you know, they have to, they're responsible for hauling it and. Making sure that it's safe and adequate for their use in their home. I mean, there's a lot of things to consider. If we start looking at a local ordinance for haul water.
Okay, questions, comments?
Well, you know where my stance is. I want to move forward.
So.
Well dry up.
So you're, you're, you're seeing a way through this, though. You, you're stating, these are the issues. But I haven't heard any issues that can't be easily mitigated with an internal policy that says you have to have legal right. You have to prove legal right to the water, to the county, help to you. And then you also need to show wet water, and you, once it gets there, when they do their test for their building. They have to do it at the tap and it has to pass a fecal coliform and the nitrate and all the rest of the tests. And once that passes that, then we say you have the right to use it, continue to use either this filtration method or whatever you're going to use. But then we're out of it. Our liability is out of it. You have the legal and, and wet water. And we don't care, because let's be honest, people only need to haul water for about a year before they go. I don't care what it costs them drilling a well. But when you're building a house, I totally understand. You don't have that kind of money to, to put into a well.
I think another issue with that is if lenders will accept cisterns for adequate water in the building permit, so.
That's, that's not, that's, that's not, that's what the lender's willing to do. We don't care about that. Exactly, that's not our concern, and, and as long as, you know, some lenders might look closely, some might. A lot of people that are building are building with cash and they're not, they don't care if there is no lender.
We do have a pretty good local, well, Kansas County has a really good ordinance that addresses haul water. And cistern use, so that is a county we could look towards mirroring language.
I'm okay with that. I just, I don't want to add a bunch of hoops and bells and whistles and to try to make it difficult.
Well, I want to make it easy for the constituents and I also want to make it easy for David and our, and our environmental health people. In order to process these applications. I've, I've yet to, I've yet to see anything that's, that's an absolute no. We have, you know, during big events, you have potable water purveyors that provide water, you know, to like, you know, huge concerts and everything else. There is a way to do it.
No, I was just, you know, the question for me is always what, what's the problem that we're trying to solve necessarily? I mean, I know there are, I mean, there are limited, there are. Well. Yes, but, you know, I think there are, there are a handful of examples. Of where there really is no other alternative. But I do have concern, I mean, I guess if somebody wants to do it, but I also know that things turn out to be our problem down the road. Where we end up with a bunch of houses built out in the hinterlands, because there's a reason that lot only costs five thousand dollars. Is because there's no water on it. And if you want to do that, I'm all for people being able to do that. But then the next thing I know, I got a chamber full of people that there's a problem that we now have to solve. Because the purveyor went out of business or the whatever, I, I want to be able to do this and maybe I don't care. It's like, well, that's your problem. Not, not my monkey, not my circus, but part of my job is to try to anticipate that. And not cause a future problem by just trying to fix something today that I'm just, I'm creating a problem in the, in the future. When maybe I'm not here.
You could be creating something today that fixes a problem in other jurisdictions like Glenwood in the future.
Yeah, possibly.
That's, that's, that's a good point, Dan. I mean, we're looking at this at the same time we're looking at Glenwood. And I'm still trying to get in touch with the right people at the tribe to see if, if they will write the. The permit, the ten-year permit for Glenwood or not, and, and so that's the same instance. We might have people who want to build today who have cash on hand, or they need to put it on the ground. And, and we can say, well, we can't, you can't provide, you can't show potable water, because the, the nation won't provide you the letter, so we can't prove it. But we're working on it and we're, we're negotiating it, and so you might have to haul water for a couple of years before you can drill the well. And that might be a perfect example of, you know, that interim, just like if somebody's like, I, I need to build my house. But the well's going to cost sixty thousand bucks, because the, the nearest wells are, you know, eight hundred to a thousand feet deep. Well, I understand that. Maybe you'll never drill a well, because you don't want to pump the water that far.
I, I also look at it as wells are drying up and, you know, not everybody can just go get a personal loan for forty to sixty thousand dollars. To drill a well. You know, they might need some.
Or to deepen a well.
Right, so they got to have something in the interim to get them through. I, I don't think that many people are going to be using this option. And I think there's people that use this option currently. It's just illegal in our county per se. And I, I don't know, I'm just not a. Overburden some regulations slash person, so, and I think that's what this is. And, and I don't think, I understand where you're coming from about people, you know, who probably shouldn't build in those places that they probably shouldn't build. But you know what? It's their property. If they want to build there, they should be able to build. And it shouldn't be up to government to say, oh, okay, you can do what you want on your property, but I'm not going to let you go do what you want on your property.
Well, I mean, I'm sensitive to that, but we, you know, we also, you can make the same argument, why do we have road standards that people, why do we have? Why do we not just allow subdivisions out in the hinterlands with no fire access? And no, it's because we have an, we have an obligation to protect public health and public safety.
Not arguing that at all, which is.
This is the public health part.
Water purifier who's licensed and insured and showing you their water and.
I know, that's something like a lot of hoops.
That, that's the sign-off. They, they are more than willing to come present all their documentation to this board. Of their inspections and everything else on their trucks. You know, if you want to make it, you know, anybody can haul the water, that's fine. I'm talking about a licensed. Company then qualifies as one of the sources of well city, you know, municipal water, that licensed purifier. Would be good.
Are you saying purveyor?
I'm saying whatever I'm saying. So yeah, I'm saying three different ways now in the last three sentences. So I figured you'd catch that.
Okay. To finish this off, uh, Kavanaugh, you have, have you worked up a, a draft for this that we can review? Or where are we at and what's the next step?
Uh, I think there's, it sounds like there's, um, we have, uh, two different opinions on, on how much oversight there should be on the permitting process. So maybe, uh, we should sit down and ask what, what questions, how much oversight we want on this. To issue a permit or what we consider potable and adequate for homes without being too overregulated.
That sounds like we need, it sounds like we need one commissioner to work with, with Kavanaugh and, and maybe Rebecca or Q to, to come up with that. Um, who wants to do that? I know you've been interested, Dan. Um, I know enough about water to be too dangerous and I'd be willing to do it.
Well, I, I
But if you want to do it, feel free.
I, I don't mind doing it. If you want me to do it, that's fine. But I think you are probably a little more tactful. And that I am, it would probably go a lot farther and be able to get something done than me.
Okay, I'll do it. That just means you get the next iron that goes in the fire.
Hey, I'll take this one back and give you that one. All right. Thank you, sir.
I don't know what that one is, but I'll take this one.
You'll be out of town for it, I'm sure. Okay, sounds like that's the plan. It's easier for me to react to act when I actually see something too. So.
And, and Dave, if, if you want to write down your concerns, because I know, I know you're looking at like, what are the potential pitfalls? Are we, are we creating a can of worms? And, um, I'd be happy to include that in, at least in the thought process so that we can nip those in the butt ahead of time. But, um, I know there are people that are currently interested in doing this, that there are people that have built things that have not applied for building permits just because they couldn't get the access to water. And I would rather have people have an actual permitted structure that, you know, that we know about.
I would like to, for Dave to write down his concerns so that you can bring those up with the prosecutor or Rebecca or whoever as you're doing this. So we can get ahead of potential issues before the land under base. Yeah, I could do that. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm
Is Q on the line? I still couldn't, I, because I'm hotspoting off my phone, I couldn't get the, I can't see who's online, but is Q there? Does he have any thoughts?
He is there. He is online. I don't know if he's, wants to jump in now or later is fine. He could be hosing his house down right now. So, oh, go ahead, Dave.
Oh, I just, I have no comment right now.
Okay.
Did you say Dave's house, David's house is burning down right now? Don't start rumors like that.
No, but he is, he's in the, he's in the path. He's in the region.
Thank, thank you, Q.
You know, we complain about that noise, but think of what that guy feels when he goes home and sits in his chair. Yeah, I've been that guy. About a migraine. There's no way. I didn't really bother. I didn't really bother. You just, you kind of, it's sort of sad really.
It does, doesn't bother you till you're sleeping and your hands are still shaking up and down?
Yes. So, okay, let's, let's move on up.
He was gracious to give us the opportunity to, not on the agenda to talk about.
Speak up loud over the, we're filming an episode about bash, so.
The budget meeting on, remake, budget meeting on Thursday.
Yes.
One thing I wanted to add before that if I may, is I'm sympathetic to Aaron's concerns over the grant management. When she was hired a couple of months before, the gentle reminder, before the COVID, she was tasked with dealing with some systemic structural issues in her department, which exists today. And so I think she now maybe having the time to try and deal with these and, and the, the whole grant management piece and the financial piece in general is, I think that's part of her direction when she was hired and that those problems that existed for quite a while before she was hired. So I think that's what she's trying to address now. They're not new problems, they're old problems. So, um, and it seems like grants in general, if I may, this is, I'm trying to keep this from being a personal opinion. Grants seem to be listening to Sharon and listening to Aaron's concerns. Grants taken as a whole seem to be a force multiplier. And they leverage your existing dollars. Take them individually. They have hooks, they have conditions, they have requirements and they have matches. And so until we get our hands on it as an enterprise, all of these varying pieces, it's, there's a lot of unintended consequences that can occur if we do something over here, it has an impact over there. So trying to get to where we get a global understanding of the grants for all the departments.
Yeah, I think it's, because I think it's, we may find that we have some that we would be money ahead to decline. And that's a hard conversation to have sometimes with the department that that's their grant, but it's like, or at least the board under, you know, ha- has their eyes open where it's like, you know, we know we're actually losing money on this grant and that we choose to do that because it's, it's really important and we want to do that. But I think at this point, we don't know any of that. And I think half the time, nobody knows that they don't know there's, and I think we have seen, I just know from seeing the, the grant agreements that's come through. The requirements have gotten more and more and more, more reporting, more, more auditing, more everything that goes with them where it's like some simple thing. What is, you know, like that, the one we had today that was on the consent, you know, it was, you know, 35 pages. You know, I was bored last night. I was actually reading.
I, I think the other thing that we have to look at, let's see, is grant.
Was a consent to handle in a grant and a, and a fully charged. What's the percentage of, let's say that our number of grants now, let's remove COVID grants. Right. Because that's a outlier. But other than COVID grants, what percentage of grants do we have that say versus five years ago? I mean, is it double?
I don't think anybody knows.
I don't think anybody knows. Yeah, it would happen.
Because grants impact not only the departments, but the audit department, the fiscal department. I mean, each of them has, you know, their, and I think we have a lot of them. On the one hand, they provide leverage to existing dollars, but sometimes they're very restrictive and hard to limit your ability to make change sometimes.
Well, it's just, it's
Nothing's free, is it?
It's hard for me to, I guess I would say, think that our, our director of a department is going to spend all their time playing with grant stuff as opposed to doing what they really should be doing. And maybe that's a structure, um, problem, um, so that they're not the one doing that.
I think public health is probably one of the departments that are always going to have grants with or without COVID. And, you know, there may not be too much opportunity to, to change that, but from an organization-wide basis. I mean, it seems to me by the time they get to you, they should have embedded, you know, at least had a peer review somewhere so that they meet certain requirements and, uh, certain goals of the county.
Right. Go ahead, Jake.
When you think about it, all of our departments that we have direct control over, except for maybe human resources, all of those have a significant portion of their budget is dealt by grants. Some of those departments are very slim where you have a director and maybe one or two people underneath them. Some of those departments are very massive, like Public Works, where a significant portion of those dollars that come in is still grants. And, and so it's not a one size fits all fit category. The colors of money is very serious. Sometimes you're playing six different grants off of something. And every one of those grants that I've come across in the last five years, the reporting has become more onerous. And, and they went from being more block grants, like here's, you hear the $200,000, do the job to here's task A, B, C, D, E, F, G. And, and you can only spend this much money in each task or you have to do a grant amendment. Well, the grant amendment is going to take you six months and hours and hours of work. It's not even worth it to do it. So, so the grants are getting more difficult as we go on with time and the overhead is continuing to get worse. I see some being inside, not this year, but last year.
Well, the, the grants are getting more complicated, but the, the board should definitely keep in mind that, um, generally the grants are being applied through and signed off and certified by the department head or the elected. They're the ones subject to potential criminal charges or audit findings if there's something that runs amiss. So it's not something they can just delegate in total, um, to someone unless they have immense trust, uh, the trust that it's difficult to comprehend that you could have another individual that would hold your freedom, um, subject to their, to the adequateness of them doing their job. So just keep that in mind that, that being a department head, being a leader means that you are, uh, this is indeed part of your job to certify, uh, uh, and the numerous certifications that are required to lie these grants to ensure there's a mechanisms in place for compliance with the terms of the grants and so forth. That's, that's what management's about.
Absolutely agree with David. I think there's also the ability before we, before the commissioner sign off on a grant to run it through, you know, to see if it's, if it fits, all of the, checks all the boxes.
And, and each, every grant that we ever do goes through Q's office, correct? At least in better.
But those are, those are not reviewed for, uh, let, let's set the record straight on that one. Those, those are reviewed for generally pretty discreet legal terms on indemnification clauses, venue clauses, liability clauses, um, shifting attorney's fees, um, things like that. We're not here to offer an opinion on whether each office department could satisfy the terms of the grant. That's up to the department head or elected.
Right. Thank you, Q.
Well, Thursday, so Greg's gonna, the treasurer's going to report shortly about the finance committee meeting, which addressed many of the issues that came up at the previous budget meeting, uh, information requests. So Greg will report on that. Uh, Jen and I were just wondering, you know, we're still in the Thursday mode for budget discussions. And one for this Thursday, we're scheduled in the afternoon, wanting to know if, in addition to maybe what Greg's going to report or talk about, if there's other things that you know you want to talk about. Or are we at a point where we want to change into every other Thursday? Or if we're kind of exhausted, we hate to keep bringing, you know, what do you want to talk about? What do you want to talk about? Other side of that is we prepare what we think you want to talk about. And if it's not what you want to talk about, Jen's put a lot of work into preparing something. So trying to keep moving forward, we're, we're coming up on the full budget process, which will be, uh, maybe that's where we need to, you know, to be prepared to get into or, um, but we just want to keep checking in with you. We don't want to have Thursdays and cancel them each week if you don't need them, but we also don't want to just cancel them and then wind up in, it's October and we're having
The work we should have done.
Marathon, marathon meetings. So I don't
I will tell my seatmates that I, I talked to her this morning and I want, um, I told her I wanted to see each, let's call them sources of revenue, whether it's raising our half a percent sales tax and what that would do, what other option is there and what that would do. But I also want to know, you know, kind of what number we have to hit. And, and I guess I'd say look at it twofold. What would that number be across the board cuts if we were just making cuts? And then look at what our revenue numbers is so we can discuss, you know, whether lifting the sales tax would counter weigh the airplane tax.
Right.
So there's kind of twofold there, but some of that's going to take some research with treasurer to, um, get those numbers.
Yeah, both sides of those would be difficult to have by Thursday.
Yeah, I think it'll be Thursday. So I think that's the information we need to have. Because somewhere, you know, one end is just cuts and the other end is just revenue sourcing. We're going to need to pick and choose from one or the other or have a little bit of both. Let's have everything sitting on the table. So we can discuss what revenue parts would actually make sense or, you know, should we drop from seven percent to three percent on this side? So, um, that's kind of what I was thinking here.
So Dan, thank, thank you, Dan. Um, and I, and I agree with that 100%. Um, we're, we set more the policy to this is where we got to go because these are the hard decisions to make. Uh, we hired Jen to look at the numbers. And, and based on, on what she can see, I want to hear like her, these are my worries. This is what keeps me up at night. These are the things that when we get into the budget discussions or the negotiations, these are what we have to like, be able to lay down on the line. Because we're going to be in budget, uh, you know, contract negotiations and we have to have our own documentation to prove like, I would love to give you this, but here's what we can't do. And that's, that's the important thing. Um, and I, I understand like Jim's amazing, but she can't put all that together in such short notice. But if I were giving direction, that's what I want to know is, is give me the lay of the land and what we're facing today. Six months from now and two years from now, and how do we plan for two years from now and mitigate today?
May I agree with Commissioner Anderson, looking at it, and I think we've talked about it, finance meter, at least Greg and I've talked about it. Looking at a two-year budget, knowing the second, far they get out the worry. Vague it is because you, but if you look at a two-year, multi-year budget, then, you know, you're not making a decision based on now. You kind of say, what's this going to look, cost me two years from now? What's the expense going to be? What's the revenue? Does it drop off? And, you know, so kind of broadening the view a little bit, I think will, will also help us instead of just looking year to year. And I know we've looked back, we have 10-year reports and, but also projecting forward a little farther may be valuable as, as we can do that in many organizations.
My point is if we are going to have to make cuts, I, I don't want to do three percent this year and three percent next year. I, I would rather just rip the Band-Aid off, uh, if that's the Band-Aid we plan on ripping off. So that it is for the long term and not throwing a patch on a situation.
So you want to hold off on Thursday?
I would, I mean, my recommendation would be, or my belief would be, I would hold off on cancelling, doing anything. We'll come on Thursday, based on that conversation and how far we get, I think we'll know what the, and if there, if we end up with a list of really in-depth pieces of information we need from folks, we can't expect you to just pull that out of the air. It might be, okay, maybe we need two weeks to get that rather than just have a meeting to have a meeting. And I think there's, we have lots to talk about and I, uh, I agree with everything that my seatmates have said. I mean, what I'm looking for is the whole suite of things that we're going to put everything out on the table. And some things are more palatable to different ones of us too. And there's, it's, we're, we are going to arrive at some consensus between the three of us and the whole team as to what the best, and I, I'm really confident when we get done, we'll be, none of us are, it's, I mean, we don't like any of it, but I think we will, it will make sense to us on whatever that is. I'm not coming with, well, this, I have a plan, here it is, this is what I want and I'm going to stake this territory out. I'm going to try to work on you and I'm going to try to work on Jake to get you to my, it's like, I'm not coming with that. I have some ideas, but I don't. Cause there's, I'm, I'm ready.
Only a man who, who, who has a plan would say he doesn't have a plan.
Okay. Well, I, I have a, yeah, I have some ideas, let's say on that, but it would be a Thursday, we weren't on
So, so just from my, my perspective, just because, uh, I'm on vacation, but unlike, unlike the, the smart commissioner, I actually come to my meetings while I'm on vacation. If we don't have, I, I hate having a meeting for no meeting. If we don't have that all done by Thursday, I'm totally fine with that. Because I've got to fly back from Idaho that morning and, and waste on winds and all this smoke. Um, I may or may not be able to be there anyways. So if we don't have to, I'm totally fine with not.
We would just
Just laying it all out there.
Oh, we did, we did, we did cover for it.
Yeah, it's a good thing he doesn't have video, right?
Okay. Okay.
Sorry, I, I, I couldn't hear that. What did she say?
Nothing, nothing, nevermind.
Fly safe.
Fly safe, yeah.
One thing I did want to make a note about, um, everybody keeps talking about workshops with departments starting in October. I know historically that the county has done that. I believe that I got with Lee early on when I got here. Um, and we have those starting on the calendar in September, so to give us extra time, right? Because this year was So to give us extra time, right, because this year was.
Because our, yeah, our typical calendar that we have used in the past for meeting with departments is super abbreviated and we anticipate. We're gonna have, there's gonna be more questions. There's gonna be it. It's, you know, where you literally, oh, you have a department, you have 10 minutes.
Yeah.
And then, I mean, it looks like I it's always in the past, it's been like going to the doctor's office where there's a thing scheduled, oh, from 10 to 10:05, from 10:05 to like, there's not. And please, we will build time to run down the hall and to stretch and to because we have had calendars where it is literally. Hours and hours and hours where they are back to back. So pretty soon, the players that are here for everything are like.
What's that about? Poor planning is no excuse?
Ah, well, come on now.
So we are starting earlier. It's gonna be in the beginning of September or not October.
There may be departments you want to bring in that's all departments are complex, some are are more complex and bring them in without the budget discussion, but just help us. Understand what you do and all the effects you have, just so so you don't have to do that.
In depth, right, in depth.
Say there'll be a little bit of line item vetoing and budgeting. Hey, Mr. Jake, are you gonna be on the radio Thursday?
Um if I have service, if while I'm in the air, uh I hope so. Well, I don't know. I I didn't, I wasn't able to hear everything that was said. Uh my phone cut out during public comment today, so I I want to be on the radio on Thursday.
On the radio, yeah.
The answer is yes, I try to be everywhere at all times.
Of course, I'm not sure, like I conducting an interview while you're flying a plane, but.
It has autopilot. It's okay.
Okay.
I have autopilot in my car too, yeah, my knee.
I have autopilot at meetings, but it's not always fail safe. Okay. Mr. Treasurer. Although before I I take. I want to be.
Rob, is Rob still in the room?
No, he's walked out. You can talk about him now.
Sorry. All right. I'll send him an email. Thanks, though.
I do want to be cognizant of the we're now he's back in the room now. Yeah, uh, Mr. Canal, did you, are you good for time right now if we take the treasure?
Yeah, I am. Uh uh again, I usually keep Tuesday afternoons clear. It was just last week was unusual. I had a 3:30 firm.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, yes, your treasurer. Um, I have a further fairly long update today and I have no good news, unfortunately. So.
I just want to start out with that.
I'm signing off right now.
Kind of good to temper the day. I'm not gonna come in and make it better. So uh to report on, I mean, Rob's kind of hit some of the pieces on the finance committee, but I'll go through what I have in the notes. Um and Brenda and Rob and Dave can all chime in and Jen. So we did uh at the meeting, uh the treasures are gonna have a treasures association meeting on the 23rd of July. So we did cancel the 23rd. Of July meeting, so we will not have our next meeting until I think it's the 13th or the 12th or something of August. The 13th, Friday the 13th.
That's right.
Um, we talked about the Rescue America Plan. Uh we didn't really have any great in-depth discussion about it. We just brought it up. Jen had some updates. But I I didn't really get too many items on here. We did receive the payment of the original 2.1 whatever million dollars. I I didn't really go into any depth on there. We then went into talked about the sales, the timber sales distribution. And we I I wanted to make sure I I came back to the board. We have uh received about a million dollars on the Oak Ridge Timber Sale. And that has been distributed to the uh. Districts per the tax. Method for per we we have used, I'm having a hell of a time spinning this out. We used RCW 7964110, section 1A2. Um which basically states that, and I'm gonna read it out of here. That it the funds are distributed in the same manner as the general taxes are paid and distributed during the tax year of payments. So um we we are, I think the projected sales of the timber were about 1.7 in total for the whole entire project. Um we've received about a million and we've distributed them that way. So the county um general fund and road fund got about 25% of that. The state school, one and two, both got about 24% of that total. So.
That is, uh have you have you subtracted out the 25% that goes straight to the state off the 1.7 million? Because they get their cut first, correct?
They take it before they send it to us. We get 75% of the timber sale.
Of the stumpage value.
Right. And I believe that the number that we're getting is already taking their 25% off.
You're 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 sure?
And and folks that I've talked to, that's what I've talked to Thurston um and. Who was the other one? Uh I talked to Skamania and I've talked to um. Louis and I I I believe I I will double check that, but I I was under the understanding that when we got that dollars that the um they had already. We basically got 75% of it.
And and so are we expecting one more check for next month to bring it up to the 1.7? Because I I thought 1.7 was the the total timber sale value. And so we get 75% of that.
The DNR sheet, that's where I came up with the 1.7.
And so that's that's the total timber sale, so we should get 75% of that.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, and I'm expecting nothing because when this first check came in, I wasn't expecting that either. So I'm really just as they're coming in, I'm applying them and I'm going through and I have the contract number. That they come through, so um.
I thought you said you weren't bringing any good news today.
Well, I guess that is good news. I guess I did.
So. So right now, what right now, what's the number that went into the county general fund? Was it 250K?
No, it is uh hold on because I brought all that with me because I knew you were gonna get it. I I knew I was gonna need it. So.
Is it just county and schools or is it fire district?
No, it's fire. Yeah, it's everybody. So, yeah, I I was, I only put those two on there because they're the biggest, but like cemetery district one is in there. EMS district got some money, fire district three, uh hospital district two, the library district's another big hitter in there. Um school district 405. By the way, this timber sale happened in TCA 40 and 41, so we had did have to and per the contract, it looks like it's. 75% one TCA, 25% the other, which is then confusing Jake because that goes in line with the 7525 of what the other piece is, I would agree. But anyway, and then county road and then the state school. So it goes to all the TCAs, everybody, just as if it was a tax payment. Um, I don't have the number totaled up, Jake, for the whole as to what went into general site. Here's a payment because it got it gets broken out, but here's $368,000 and the county general fund got 42,000. And the road department got 52,000. So the of a $368,000 payment. So I can go in and pull. What? Oh, I might.
So we got a let, so the county general fund got 11% of that payment is what you're saying.
And then the other percentage went into uh road. Of the 25, you know what I'm saying?
So 11% to the general 14.
Road department.
Yeah, because the levy rates are different.
Different, so.
Yep.
So so the county, the key is the county is not getting all of the one, the 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 timber sale. We're distributing it out per. And then I I provided RCW, which was the 7964110.
So what about uh for levies, like when when fire district three, because I think it's within fire district three runs a levy? And there and so the auditor or the assessor runs all the numbers and sets up your assessment. And then this comes through and it's just like bonus bucks, right? Kind of like how we're treating it.
Right. It's just the same thing it would be for the road. The road did a budget and we uh, you know, they have, it's it's $50,000 that they didn't anticipate.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that next year they don't have to change their levy in order to make a two-year budget make sense. To, you know, to to account for that bonus dollars.
I don't. I don't see how that would impact. I think they would continue just how they're doing their budgeting and they would budget what they had and go through with their process. So there. I mean, obviously, there there it might impact like their cash balances up, but.
So but it doesn't go like in our case, it doesn't go towards our highest levy number.
That would be an aside. That that is getting into levies and honestly, that's a Krista question.
You know, like we're allowed to increase by 1% our highest lawful levy.
Yep.
Does that number go into that number or not? I suspect not because that's a different. You know, this is literally bonus money is from a completely diff, it's not really levy revenue. It's.
Well, well, technically, what it is is it's dollars that could have been assessed or taxed. If you didn't have the timber classification for land use taxation purposes. Instead, you get it when somebody goes and does it. And so it's not really bonus. It's they're finally paying what they should have paid 20 or 30 years ago.
Yeah, it's really deferred tax that you didn't.
Well, it's be it'd be the same thing as if somebody took it out of current use or something, then you're getting that money then.
Okay, that's a question because I'm curious.
I can I can answer that we're getting.
I guess I would have a question on whether actual taxpayers can have a claim that they pay too much taxes. Because this should be some like kicker. Because now the other guy's paying some.
And there's always revenue streams that are come in that are unexpected. I mean, it'd be kind of like getting a sales tax plane if you if you edge, if you. Budget so much for a plane and your sales taxes over, you know, those that's, I mean, but again, those are all pieces and I think those are all as we go through the budget process. You'll see them on there. Um this does come in as sale of an asset, I believe, is how it is the term and and the bars number that is used on the. On the uh in in Pianta. Any other questions on the tax distribution or the distribution of the timber sales?
No, so so what I worked out is is uh when it, when we see a timber sale come through. Um we get 75% of the overall value. And between our general fund and our county road fund, we get 25% of that. And that's what we can assume when I when I see something get sold.
Based upon 2021 levy rates.
Based, yeah, based upon those levy rates. Thank you for all your work, Greg.
It's not as big of a number as I thought it was.
Well, that's against the facts. Yeah, I guess that's probably. Right, it's not. Yes, it's still something we didn't expect.
So so one one thing to think about this is is that, you know, when we changed everything over and now state schools gets all this extra money, right? Well, it used to be it were local, they were local dollars. And so when a timber sale sold, our local levies were a lot higher. And now local levies got dropped down and they went to state schools. Now the state gets all this extra money. So the state's getting the bonus rather than our local school districts. That's something to think about when it comes to this stuff.
Yep. And that's the challenge with how they did all that was they pulled all that money to have control of it at the state level, not the county level.
Precisely, which which does it, which which means our local schools that would like, if you didn't have the timber classification land use designation, they would be taxing. The local school levies would be taxing all of this ground at at timber value that they'd pay every year on. And then the schools would get more money, the levy rates would be lower for the locals. And then and then uh when we change it over to the timber classification, timber timber. Then those dollars flow in in bundles when they actually log it. Well, now, but rather than those those dollars flowing into the local areas where that timber is housed, now it flows to the state for them to distribute. Anybody else see it see that as being an an issue in in any given way?
Yeah, a couple ways.
That issue, yeah.
Just saying, food for thought.
Oh, I'm I'm with you.
Budgeting, so kind of to piggyback on to what Rob brought in already and to kind of go through the notes that I have from. We um did spend quite a bit of time at the finance committee meeting because there was some discussion at the Tuesday board meeting, so we were writing some things down. And we went into some pretty lengthy conversations about budgeting. One of the things that we did come up with during the discussion was this table that is out there, which is what you had talked to Jen about, which is what we talked about last. Friday about trying to put something together that is it is the tools of dealing with the revenue parts of it. With the timeline of how long it takes and the amount of money that is impacted in that. So basically, I have a little sheet here and it it just, it's. We came up with, you know, sales tax is one of them. That's that's a tool. It doesn't, it, everybody has their opinion on it, but it's an item and not. Sales tax and it's the percentage to get you to 7.5. There's a transportation tax, there's a property tax levy lidlet, there's criminal justice tax, there's municipal court. Fees, there's EMS fees to districts and you as users, there's EMS tax. And so the kind of the thought that we had is just that you guys were discussing, this is not something that we're gonna pull together overnight and it's gonna miraculously be in a spreadsheet. So the thought was if we could put this together, this, we could go through this on the 813 finance committee meeting and presented at the board meeting following that. Um it's gonna take a lot of different parts. I think, you know, some of these are gonna be Jen and I working together, some. Uh how however, we're gonna figure out how to get these pieces. There's might be other um amounts out there that, you know, if. Those were the ones, some of the ones that I had in my notes that I scribbled down really quick as we were talking about them. So we think that that's something that's gonna be necessary for all the parts of the budgeting so that the board has that. Since we talked at the at the finance committee meeting, I know Dan and Commissioner Anderson weren't there. Do you guys have any additions, thoughts? It sounds like it's something that you've been thinking about, Dan.
You're on the right track for me. Do we have, is there a a tax for um radio tower right now? To get other groups to pay more into that or is that something that Jeff's gonna look at?
No, I think I don't know that there's a tax other than the, but there is, that was. And just to elaborate kind of on the municipal court and the different things was one of the revenue sources that I think we need to take a look at is. We have a whole host of services that we provide to. Cities, other entities that we are either doing free or at a heavily subsidized rate. That's fine. There has been actual decisions made in the past that we understood the subsidy and we, because we could do it, we did it. But I think that has to be on the table, but we need to explore those where kind of everybody's paying their fair share. If if we have to be making. Cuts to services while other entities are. Not paying their fair share and they don't have to do that, that doesn't seem fair to me. And so those are the things that that's what I want to look at and and that that's one of them as far as dispatch services is one of those things that we look. We can, we can look at call volumes, how much when people are calling, who's using the service and is there a way to come up with? A um fee that is commensurate with the services that we're providing. Or at least a portion of them, you know, and then we can have a whole policy. Yeah, we can have a whole policy discussion about, you know, fire districts that don't really have any resources, you know, I'm. Then it's like, okay, we're.
And they're all by interior and they only their only money can go so far. Um but, you know, it was brought up during public comment. Somebody said, we're not a, we're not going after enough grants these days. The one that's always, you know, hurt hurt me is is the fact that we've paid this entire damn radio system out of our own pocketbook where. So many other jurisdictions got grants for good portions of it. And we missed those grants a a few times and probably because we weren't highly ranked, but when we have to rebuild this, um I hope that that uh Jen. When we have to rebuild this, I hope that that Jen can work with. Jeff to try to get those grants ahead of time so that we're planning on this because these radio systems are ridiculously expensive. And they were unfunded mandates coming down from the feds and the state. And I and I don't know if Dan under, you know, knows all that, but I'm sure Dave does. But the public needs to is is that we've sunk a significant amount of money into these things. Which which I guess, you know, at the end there, that three hundred thousand that we were we used to give to practically fire districts, you know, our community block grants. Went into the the radio system. And so every one of those fire departments have been receiving the benefits of that since then.
Yeah, no, long term.
And so.
Gets management. I would like to see him come up with some kind of a a levy, radio levy proposal. Because if we don't start collecting something to get in front of that, we're never going to replace them. Which one of them are?
But and I apologize. I it's it's hard for me to not interrupt because I can't look at you guys and I I don't know when the appropriate second to interrupt. So sorry if I interrupted you, Dave.
You're good, sir. That was Dan. It was me.
Oh, then never mind. I don't mind. I'm kidding.
So, yeah, so we were going to work on that and put that together as a as an item to to bring back. And again, the finance committee does understand these are just items we're trying to. Put out for you guys as tools. It's the board's discretion as to how the tools are used or what you guys want to agree with that. So. We will try to put those together and. Like I said, we're hoping to go over those at that eight thirteen meeting. Let's see.
So question, sorry if I can interrupt you. We're we're planning a lot of finance meetings or budget meetings on Thursdays, but half of them might be getting canceled. We anticipate every Thursday in September at this point, right?
Well, they're blocked out.
Yeah, well, I know they're blocked out, but I don't want them blocked out and then going, oh, we don't necessarily use that. September is an important month for me.
For fishing.
I don't mind taking every Thursday. I just don't want you canceling it on Wednesday night. I will be here on every Sunday in September if that's what needs to happen. I just don't want to cancel what when I do.
Okay, note to sell.
Cancel them well in advance.
Hey, you know what? We we can. We can all three go out on dance boat and fish while sitting in the meeting if that's what we got to do.
No, 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 point will be correct. I agree.
The other thing we talked about was grants similar to what Rob brought up is that, you know, grants have become an interesting situation where they. We've gotten money. It's first a portion of it. Maybe the money is getting pulled and pretty soon the things just keep going up and trying to measure that. I don't think we came up with a good idea, but we did have a good discussion about that and just how that works and kind of where those things were at. So we, you know, that it it kind of. Takes your your baseline and just kind of raises a little bit. Pretty soon you're having to fund that out of other things. And over the course of time, you realize you're, you know. That's not being funded by a grant anymore. It's now being funded by other forms of revenue other than grant revenue because the law the number just gets chumped up there. There has been some discussion. I think Jen was going to work on historical inflation rates and kind of where everything were was going or, you know, things to compare to of where we are. Again, you know, I think i- if you're watching much in the in the news or in, you know, in in the information, it looks like. You know, some inflation is anywhere from five to eleven percent. I mean, it, you know, you see any number reported and substantiated in whatever way. The bottom line is not zero. That's for sure. So we can argue if it's six or seven, but it's it's up there. So there there is a part to that. There was some discussion around.
It's capped at four in this case.
Yeah, okay, it's like. Lexi glass.
Nope.
Yes, it just goes around. It just goes around. And then there's some things on airplanes that we need to kind of figure out. I think I don't really know exactly what we had pinpointed on airplanes.
Jake had. Wanted to have some idea of what how much dollars you can.
Great. So essentially, we want to know how many dollars a year.
Can can Jen? Can Jen speak up a little bit? She's a little far away from the mic or something.
Talking about taxes, sales taxes off airplanes. We want to know what we get a year off an airplane so that if we try to take our half a percent, we're no longer going to get that.
Are we going to lose it on the backside? Yeah.
I don't. We would totally lose. We would still be if you took the half a percent, you would still be one of the lowest counties of sales tax. So like the county that came.
Right. But would we be the lowest?
But the county that came to me, which was Grant County, the one that said, oh, you guys are now getting the planes. I think when we looked the other day, they were at over eight percent.
Yeah, they're at eight point three.
So it's not like they're competing. Yes.
Maybe seven point nine five is what you said.
No, no, I seven, yeah, seven, five is a stretch for me. We're at seven now. Yeah.
All a stretch. It's all really good.
Here's my list. Here's my stress ball. Yeah.
He's going to have one. I'm excited.
And then Jake had talked.
I just want to explore the tools. I'm not taking a position on.
And I think that's.
Any of them.
Agreed. And I think that's, you know, timber sales, there was a conversation or, you know, kind of looking at timber sales as being whether there's, you know, right now, we budget zero.
Right.
And one comes along and I mean, Jake brings it up in a meeting. I'm like, oh, look. And then the next week or two, I get a check in the mail. And it's like, you know, we don't have any budget for those or is there any, you know, just something to look at? So that's that was brought up on the tickler list.
Yeah, but it's still budget dust right now because we don't get all of it. We only get twenty five percent of seventy five percent.
Correct. I I did bring the 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 debt schedule and I totally walked out of my office and when I started to sit down related. Make a copy of it. So I'll probably send it to you guys. But basically, the Public Works Trust Fund loan on the Dallesport wastewater facility, that is. The last payment will be made in twenty twenty one on that. And then we will make a twenty twenty one payment of fifty eight thousand nine hundred dollars. And of then there are two payments left, one in twenty twenty two and one in twenty twenty three. Of the there's a fifty eight thousand dollars in twenty twenty two and twenty nine thousand according to the debt schedule that I got from Susan. The fifty eight nine twenty three, the final payment on that loan is reserved in a reserve account that we have. So really, in order for us to pay that loan off and not have anything encumbered against the Dallesport wastewater facility, it would cost us twenty nine thousand dollars. So then if we did.
In twenty twenty three or or when?
Oh, I mean, we could pay it back or just pay that in.
We can we can we're not. We can pay early if we want.
We could pay now and the only piece that we would have from a cash perspective would be the twenty nine thousand because the. The fifty eight is reserved. The final payment got reserved.
Where is that?
It's on our reconciliation.
I mean, you have it.
Yeah, it's it's it's.
It's in your part of our cash.
Where? No, it's it's part. It's a line item.
It's in the hidey hole.
Okay, all right. Like a reserved cash amount.
What's happening? Then we can list that property for sale.
Well, and well, that has come up. So that point I did come up and it was.
Suggests us running an RFP for that.
Right.
For that very valuable asset.
And I think we all thought it was a good idea. So I bring that to you. That was another discussion that we had there.
Easy to find twenty nine thousand dollars is what that makes.
And it does. And I will say from the on behalf of the auditor and the treasurer. The Dallesport wastewater facility is a lot of work and it's a lot of work in the annual report. And there's a lot of challenges with it. And without going into great detail and going down a huge rabbit trail, I think Brenda would. Be supportive of that and I would be right behind her.
Greg, what what were our annual payments for it?
The the for the Dallesport wastewater facility?
Yeah, what were we paying?
Well, we were paying about five, just maybe. Five forty because we had a Public Works Trust Fund loan and a state revolving fund loan.
So we should see half a million removed from our expenses going forward.
No, half a million dollars is going to move into fund two oh one, which is the debt fund for the building because that money that we were freeing up there. The plan was, and again. When we did that, the idea was is that we had been doing that plus the the Pioneer Building. And that those two amounts would roll off and that would kind of be the the new building.
But but we've always we've always had the conversation that we're going to have a double payment in twenty twenty one or twenty twenty two.
Or the Pioneer Center. So, yes, and and I do have that right here. We will have that that. Payment goes through twenty twenty four. So we actually have twenty twenty.
Wait, Dallesport wastewater, we like this year, we have to pay the five hundred and forty thousand dollar payment. And we're making the first payment on the new building.
Correct.
So we are. We we're paying both things.
That's what we're paying double. But next year, we got to pay twenty three, not five hundred. So it makes the new building feel less.
Right. And then we pay the Pioneer Building off in twenty twenty four. And then that frees up that amount of money to continue down that path.
Right.
And how much is the Pioneer Building?
Is that one eighty five or two?
The Pioneer Building payment for twenty twenty two is going to be one ninety two, seven ninety seven.
Isn't there a second piece?
And what's the what's the new building payment going to be total?
I didn't hear what you said.
Say again, Jake. I'm sorry. I talked over you.
The the new building total per year, isn't it closer to a million?
One point two.
The total million total due for. Twenty, including the local bill, the the payment on the new building and the others.
No, just the the new.
No, just the new building.
New building is going to be in twenty twenty two, one point two seven million.
So we still have the one ninety eight for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four for the Pioneer Center. Plus the one point two.
Correct.
I think the thing on the wastewater treatment plant might be incorrect is that there's talk about a pretty significant capital improvement on that plant.
Yeah, there's talk.
Talk. So before we get to that point, it might be.
Yeah. So. Yeah. So anyway, so we did talk about the the Dallesport wastewater facility in and amongst all of those pieces and about the that. Part of it. And then. The only other thing that we did kind of talk about was just as we were working through some of these pieces, some of the items like for the tools. Might not be able to be implemented even if we started in October, November until. You know, March or April of twenty twenty two, but we could still start to see those take off and whether they be on a on the revenue side or the expense side. That we didn't have to have everything set in stone that was going to impact the twenty twenty two budget on twelve thirty one, twenty twenty one. That we could put the planning, the planning for it needed to happen, but that, you know, like like sales tax, Brenda did some research. It looked like it was going to be ninety to a hundred and eighty days. Depending on what day you got in there. I just put that in there for some bookmarks. So it's. What's that?
You're Brenda.
You're Brenda. You looked it up over your.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Okay.
I'm like, didn't she?
Yeah, you did. You looked it up in real time for us.
And I said, but if you got on the wrong day, it could be as much as six months or something like that. And so the like those things can't go right away. So if that's a decision, there's some some that's going to take some time to 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 go. And that's one of the things that we want to make sure we put in there. That was our discussion on budgets. Anybody have anything to add?
Next time you come, bring stress balls for everybody.
Okay. I will.
It's a volume maybe.
Okay, so let's move on to the next topic. We talked about renewable energy through Department of Revenue for wind, solar and gas. I've been working on that. One part is gas. I'm really interested in the gas being the treasurer for the PUD. I did get a request. So we processed all of their warrants. And we got a very long list here a while back of warrants that they need to get copies of that were paid for the natural gas or the landfill gas. Processing facility because they get a. They're going to get a credit back. So they're preparing the credit. The last one was about four hundred thousand. If I remember correctly, it was a big number, I think. I'll have to go back and figure what it is. The total of the expenses were seven point. I don't remember what I said the other day. Seven point four million. So. I'm just bringing that up that that's going to come back. And what we've been doing, this is where we take the. The sales tax that comes in and we reserve a portion of it that we can identify to wind in the in AICS codes. And we park that over into a six hundred fund. And then if these wind farms come and get that, then they go through. So. I am trying to figure out how we mitigate some of this, whether because when I go through here, the challenge is that there's all kinds of like. And I'm using this one because I happen to be able to see this. And I think this is what getting us like I reserve none of the Amazon sales tax money for wind. But these guys have.
How much Amazon?
Fifty thousand dollars of items that went there. You know what I'm saying? And so and again, it's the sales tax portion or however, so we're we're not looking at the whole entire amount. The whole seven million is the sales tax piece of that. But it becomes a large number and how do you sit through all that to figure out which number in all of that is correct? And so anyway. It was very helpful, but you know, when you go through here, you can see that they paid Cabalco compressors, for example, like one point five or one point six million dollars. And we got to figure out how to get to those guys so we can figure out that and reserve that amount. So I guess all I'm saying. Again, bad news that we there. That's going to have to be a payment that we're going to have to make back to DOR because that refund is going to come through. And right now, currently, the fund six twenty six, which is where we put those monies to. The other thing is we probably need to look at this from, I think we've we've named that fund Wind, Jen. This is a. And I think we need to change it to renewable so that it's not just wind or, you know, whichever. That fund has a balance of four hundred and seventy thousand.
And and so so what you're saying, though, is is that the renewable energy, natural gas coming off the landfill also has the same benefit? And the PUD is going to get four hundred thousand?
It has a better, but no, I'm saying the last time they this happened, it was a large number. This is phase two. So I don't know whether phase two is larger or smaller. What I'm saying, though, is we have booked that revenue as sales tax revenue. And so we're going to, there's some benefit. They actually have a better program. Their program is because I got this sent to me from the Department of Revenue. They have. The the gas one is a hundred percent. Refund on all sales tax. The wind one is not a hundred percent. It's on a percentage like you get twenty five, fifty and seventy five or something like that. It says.
So so can can you send that to all three of us? Because the PUD keeps coming in saying, you know, they they need money because nobody's paid their bill in a while. And I'd really like to have this these dollars in my back pocket.
Yeah, but there theirs is the compressed natural gas and liquefied gas, natural gas used as transportation fuel. It's Senate Bill ESSB six forty sixty four forty. And I'll send all this to you. But basically, it says, however, beginning July two thousand seventeen, the gas distribution business may apply for a remittance or refund. From the Department for the retail sales tax paid on equipment. About a hundred percent.
I'm kind of surprised our state is giving a bigger break to gas than there are windows. That's just surprising.
Yeah.
It's renewable, Dan, renewable.
And it also goes into transportation. There's a part in there and I I I didn't read into it in in its entirety, but. I don't know how they're doing all the parts and pieces, whether it's got to be a butt like you have to convert something to natural gas and then you fill up your bus for like a mass transit kind of thing. I don't know how it is. It just says transportation. So anyway, the bottom line.
Only on the hook for.
Or a portion of.
Okay, that makes me feel better. The entire.
No, it's only our portion.
Okay.
I and I haven't calculated it and this still has to go through.
Okay, it makes me feel I'm like, oh, my God.
No.
For a half a percent. So we're.
We're still going to be a chunk of change.
Yeah. Yeah, so thirty five thousand dollars is we potentially.
Good.
We have to pay of our share.
The the first one was significantly more, but that could have been.
A big pile.
And that's what that's I didn't look at. I didn't see this come through the first time. All I'm saying is we've been trying to figure this out.
I mean, they spent.
See, I don't have the.
Hey. Hey, Dave, a half a percent of a fifty million dollar contract is still two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the county.
Right. Right. So anyway, I I'm mostly wanting to let you know so I don't come to you later and say, hey, we're going to reduce sales tax by X number or we're going to reduce this quarter seventy thousand dollar. Amount we have out. I'm just wanting to make sure we're all on the same page of that. So and also that we can kind of see and use this as a way to maybe try to prepare us against solar and. So, and also that we can kind of see and use this as a way to maybe try to prepare us against solar and wind and other things.
Right. I mean, we need to get as close as we can to under, you know, to being able to identify things that we have to give back.
Right.
So that we don't just spend it.
Right.
And that's, that we said it over here, because I, I know it's, it's not Grant. I think it's Adams.
No, it's Adams.
Adams, that's the one. They didn't plan for it and they, they booked it all into their sales tax, spent it. And then they got a huge, like a half a million dollar, the first one was a half, and they're a little, they're like us. So it was like, oh, you need it, we need to pay back a half a million dollars. And they scraped back together and now there, that was the first one. And they didn't set any money aside for it because they didn't realize. They were saying, what did you guys?
So.
Oh, no, we.
So, so for, for the minutes, can we put in there that we need to have a discussion about this? Because it's one thing for the state to say, hey, we don't want our money. It's another thing for the state to say, hey, we're going to take your money too.
We've been saying that all along, Dan.
I was going to say, again, I don't know that you're going to get the state to.
Well, and so to kind of balance on there, so the, that's the natural gas side, the fuel, the, the wind, the one that wind and solar under, which is fuel cells, wind, biomass, title, geothermal, solar. And whichever, that is E, E two S S B five one one six. That one doesn't expire until twenty thirty, by the way. So just as a note, that's what I wanted to make sure we talked about too. So it's not like it goes away in twenty twenty six, twenty twenty is quite a long ways out there. It's always twenty twenty six.
Solar is the same as wind as far as one percentage that you're back.
The, it's, it's, it's a scalable percentage. I'll send the, the D O R sheet on that with the.
I think it starts a minimum of twenty.
I think.
Yeah, well, but if you, if you use union people and all that, then the solar is a hundred percent too, right?
I, I don't know. I didn't read the details. I just wanted to make sure we understood that as these things are coming on, we need to really make sure. We don't want to get caught where Adams County was and we want to make sure that we're trying to reserve the right amounts. But it's really hard to sift through every vendor that they're putting back on there. And granted, you know, you kind of have to go with the thing of, okay. You know, Allen's Building Center is, let's say, thirty two hundred dollars in total sales. So this amounts little compared to Cabalco Gas, which is one point seven million. You, you got to try to get the big hitters and let the other ones kind of ride.
Well, the one with the title Cabalco Gas.
Right.
That would probably be, I should probably look at that. Yes. Like solar panels are.
But the thing is, probably, right.
But.
So trying to sift, they're not all that way, not.
Jeff Bezos' plane pays more in proper, or in sales tax than the entire natural gas storage facility at the landfill. To the county. That's kind of crazy.
Jeff Bezos.
Oh, oh, his plane. Oh, yeah.
His, his sixty nine million dollar plane that just came through pays more in sales tax than the, the gas power facility for the next, what, ten years, nine years?
As much as possible because, you know, like Jake said, we don't know what percentage they're going to get because they're union owned or minority owned or woman owned and, and, and plan for the worst.
And we have to balance that with, we don't want to reserve too much either and have a big pile of money into the six twenty six fund because, you know. What?
Uh, question, when it, when it goes into the six twenty six fund, can it come back out? Or is it a one-way move like the others?
Um, I, I think we could probably move it back if you, if you need, if you had justification and you knew kind of where you were at, but I just, meaning once it kind of goes over there, I don't know you're going to be, I'll have to look at that.
Maybe we don't put more in.
Yeah.
It's a certain.
Take a lower percentage later.
Yeah.
Um, I would rather make sure there's something there than go whoa.
Oh, I agree with that a hundred percent.
I'd rather hold more for the start.
Which we've been holding.
Two years from now, you can go, okay, maybe we should lower that.
We've been holding, yeah, pretty, we're in pretty good shape. Yeah. Um, P U D privilege tax. So that just came through for July first.
What the heck is P U D privileged?
That is where the P U D pays a tax and so an amount comes to the city. So it's like utility tax. So the utility tax comes through. So the P U D pays that to the state and then the state remits it back to us. And then we allocate it out to the county and the three cities. But, um, and there's, it's in our budget. It'll come through. Um, Lee and I, she said, it's just, this is kind of a hot topic amongst, because just the other day, we got some information that they're going to start paying it on a monthly basis. Um, and so I kind of had done some talking and talking to the, to the P U D. And they're also thinking that there's going to be some legislating, trying to come, legislation to come through and try to allow them to have some reductions from that. So there'll be the amount. And then maybe all their bad debt, the two hundred and fifty thousand would maybe come off of that that they can't collect or some other things. So I'm just wanting to bring that up as a revenue piece. So not only are there revenue pieces that maybe we can't go up, we got to make sure that some of these are going to stay the same. So anyway, I, I'm, I'm, that's a number.
Oh, you are just full of good news.
I know, I'm not done yet either.
I'd say you should have did this at like one oh five.
Well, I've made it through that. That's the Finance Committee meeting. Those are all things that we talked about at the Finance Committee. Um, so the next meeting is eight thirteen. I have now three things that I would like to bring up in the Treasurer's Office. Um. I do have the debt schedule, which we already talked about, which I'll be kicking out to you guys. So I won't really go over that much more. Um, Unqua Bank, I got a call at the end of, oh, first part of June that we um, were not, we have not been paying fees to Unqua Bank for our banking that we have there. Um, for quite some time and it had to do with how their system worked or something. So we got an exemption. And so we are now, uh, effective July first, going to have to start paying fees. So we're working with them to try to be able to do that. Their first uh blush at it was it was going to be thirteen hundred dollars a month. And I'm like, well, I don't have that in my budget. Um, so we are going to work with them to get them reduced and reduced. We pay banking fees. It's part of my budget. We do it with Columbia Bank, the way this thing is structured, because it's not just the county. I mean, again, I'm the treasurer for all the districts as well. So I'm working with hospital, that kind of came through hospital district one as we were trying to implement some new things. We tried to do some sweeps, which are, you know, to eliminate the manual portions of some of these. And basically, Unqua is just like, we can't keep giving away these services. And so we've gone through, some of the services are as simple to get rid of because they're going to charge us three dollars for a banking statement. So we can obviously get rid of that. We don't need that. We just need to have it downloaded off and go put out there. So um, I think my point of wanting to bring it up, we don't know.
We'll do your, our, the county banking statement for three bucks.
Yeah.
Go ahead and do it.
Yeah, just because, maybe I should sell, send a three dollar, three dollar um one to the uh, of, to the district.
They're going to charge you per page on that public records request though.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah. But um, the uh, the, the, Unqua Bank, that's where the school districts are primarily at, hospital district one. And Parks and Rec is over there. So it's not our main, we kind of have two accounts that we manage, the Treasurer's Office, one at Columbia and one at Unqua. So. Yeah, no, we don't have any.
How does that work? Do those smaller taxing districts have to pay a portion of those fees or is the county just eat the fees?
No. So really how it works is a long time ago, when this was all put in, the property tax, late payment penalty and um, interest kind of covers the budget of the Treasurer's Office or kind of has. I usually put it on my budget. We're, I think it's, you know, we get five hundred thousand and we probably are at five eighty years. I mean, I'm not sure they kept up in line, but there, so no, there isn't really anything right now and they're trying to work on getting rid of the fees. So that's kind of the thing that I think as we look at unfunded mandates and other, other things from the state. If the state says, well, we're going to make the Treasurers not have fees or interest and penalty, then, you know, that's kind of going to implement some of our pieces and, or impact some of our pieces. So yes, no, we pay the banking fees for the districts. There's not a provision in there. Brenda has a piece where she can build them. For some parts, we don't have the same piece in our site. So.
The tricky part about billing is you have to have some kind of an account or plan to justify what you're doing.
Yeah, and there's a couple of things. The other thing is too, we do invest any, any money that's not invested specifically by any of the funds that are larger. Let's say, you know, all the residual cash is all invested, so the interest comes to the general fund. But again, at six basis points. Sorry, I'm not really helping you out anymore.
Yeah.
Pay for that three dollar base.
Right. That's exactly right. So anyway, so we are working, I will say, the local branch. And again, when we're talking these banking situations, this is all Spokane. This isn't the local Unqua Bank here in Olddale or White Salmon. I will say Barb has been great to work with and she's helped us out. Because of course, we do go to our local bank quite a bit and they, they understand the community impact to this. So, you know, I'm like, oh my gosh, because that was my thing. I'm like, I can't just all of a sudden, why didn't you tell me in, you know, October of last year, you're going to start this or something. I, I don't have any.
We have to raise the sales tax because I'm qualified.
There you go. Well, there you go. I will say Barb has been doing very, very good and I think we're going to be able to reduce that down significantly. So my hope is, is that is a very small impact and we won't have to get a supplemental or anything for that. But I just want to.
Do we pay? Do we pay fees at our other bank?
Yeah. And we have forever and it's part of my budget.
Okay, so, so it's, Unqua is not doing anything new. They're just joining, but the other bank already does.
And we've been getting a good deal for a really long time. My thing is I just wish I would have had more than thirty days or something to try. And it's, and it, and, and as I liken it to the bank and I kind of explain, I'm like, we're the county with all these districts. We move like an aircraft carrier in a very slow left turn. We are not a NASCAR kind of thing. We don't. So i- i- we just need time. Um, so, and I do think that they're going to work with us and try to do, they want to make it, I, I think once we got through the initial shock from all of us, I think we got it figured out. So yes, no, this is standard practice. Um, it happens at every.
Which, which banks' fees are more expensive though?
Oh, it's hard to really tell which one. They're very, pretty much the same. I mean, there, there's not really a lot of difference from one to the other. And the other, you know, another part is, you know, that was brought up is going to an R F P. But then if we do that, you never know whether you're going to be at either bank or you could be at a new bank. And we then would have, I mean.
Credit union.
You know, like, for example, the, the hospital is all nervous because they have all their um Medicare and all these payments that are all set up to come into that bank account. So, you know, they're like, it would be crazy. Oh, it would be like, yeah, yeah. I'd get many root canal takeover that. That would be horrible. So anyway, Unqua Bank, uh, potential piece. Um, letter came in yesterday from the Department of Revenue regarding the timber tax calculation here. Apparently the Department of Revenue since two thousand and eighteen has not been reducing the timber, uh, the timber tax. That not the timber sales tax that we talked about earlier, TAB. They have not been taking their um admin fee out of it. So we have to pay that back to them.
Can, can you classify that? Department of Revenue gets an admin fee for the timber tax classification. Is this coming off to twenty five percent? And you're adding to the twenty five percent?
The, the, you're talking timber sales. That's totally different. This is the TAB money that comes in from, and uh, I can send you the letter on it and um. And I might be using the wrong, let me just make sure. So it's like when anybody does a timber sale, they pay. Yeah, it's.
So this is, this is all the private side.
It's called forest tax revenue. It's not on the piece that we have been, the Department of Revenue gets a percentage of everything that goes through the Department of Revenue and they take their piece right off the top. Unless they implement a new system apparently three years ago and then finally figure out that they're not getting that. So I don't know how we'll have to do it, whether it'll be over a period of time. One option was to repay it back in August of twenty twenty one. Um, one was to spread it over. I am very, I, I, depending on the size and the amount of the dollars. Um, we just had one the other day that we got a larger amount for something and I can't remember what it was. But I want to say it was something D N R. And I sent them a message. I'm like, gosh, this is greater than what we usually get. And she goes, oh, well, there had been an error. Well, previous to me becoming treasurer, like, I want to say a long time ago, and it seems like Dan or somebody else I was talking to knew about it. And so the problem with you, if you spread those payments like a payback in a really long period of time, nobody knows why maybe something's reduced and where it goes to. So I am, I, I would like to look and see how much the amount, I've got calls into them. The letter came in yesterday. Again, I'm just, like I say, I figure if I have bad news, I might as well bring it all at one time.
Do you know what their percentage is that they take? Is it one or two percent?
Haven't even talked to them. Well, I know it's one percent on other stuff, but I don't know um what it is on this, if it's the same.
Alright.
I usually figure they take one percent of everything right off the top for sure. Sometimes they get a little.
Done credit card companies anyways.
How did you maintain such beautiful hair sitting here for twelve years?
Um, last, almost to the, I'm almost to the end. Lastly, uh, we are working on a surplus auction. Um, we had Lee send out um an email to try to figure out what's out there. Uh, we haven't done.
Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Yeah, there is, absolutely. That's not a bad idea. We can put that in there. Um, and uh.
Do it.
There were twelve.
Second.
Yeah. There were twelve um vehicles that had been surplus. Um, when I went up to the fairgrounds for, I think, Big Free Show or GoPro, some Free Show, something. There was a whole bunch of cars. I always hate going around the Joan Fry Arena and there's a lot of dead vehicles that's out there. I'm like, oh gosh, that's horrible. So anyway, we do recognize we need to do that. We did the tax title, brought our intent had always been to do something after, well, we kind of got waylaid by having to redo the surplus property. So we, we are working with a company called Public Surplus um and trying to secure them. They are a, the same company that the P U D uses to do their property. You take pictures, it goes out there. It's going from a sealed bid method to a, you will see who's bidding against you, just like the other system. So I actually think it might be better. I think the sealed bid, I don't think we were getting as much. I think the concept of it was great that people were going to pay a lot. I, I don't, I don't know that I was buying into that. So I'm curious to try something different and we would like to set it up to where we can keep things rolling. Uh, but so we are, I think we were up to nineteen, the day after we had an Indian five, it was five for the.
Of course. I, I believe that's the one I've heard from.
Right, at twenty. So, but we have eight more. So, and we think there's more than that that are out there. So we're trying to get people to let us know what's out there so we can go through. We would like to try to do in the, I know Gordy's.
Just cars or?
No, it's all surplus. The brass, the chairs, everything. Sometimes though, the chairs are not surplus any, I mean, sometimes they're junk and.
Less than twenty seven hundred dollars a lot.
Right, right. Yes, just chairs at the EMS place are a different story, but the chairs, the rest of us sit in. Um, so, but no, all that stuff. But we might have to do it, or if we can, it may be before the building. And I just want to let everybody know that we're not, we're not going to, we can do another one after we get that going. And there's going to be some logistics to try to do that. But we definitely recognize that there is a process. You've got some things that you're wanting to get surplus. There's vehicles that are out there. We need to go through and really figure out what um is out there because the cars especially, they they stop running, you know, the batteries die, they take almost more work to try to get them there. We're trying to go to this online format where hopefully it will be a lot less work for public work. Because I know the mechanics would have to try to get things running again. And we want to try to get it to where, you know, we can get some kind of rhythm in this so that when cars come through in our surplus, we can maybe every, you know. I don't know. The sort, it's just a lot of work to try to get them working. So we want to try to put something to it and maybe like.
Before they rock.
But we have always done an in-person sale. And so that's really, really difficult because you got to secure that. We do it in the horse bar or the Joan Fry Arena. So you got to get them all inside of there. This way here, we can probably take pictures of them when they're outside. We need to decide whether we're going to do a viewing or not do a viewing. Um, I've been talking to other counties. It's a mixed bag. Some do it, some don't. Um, but we need to go through. So we will be bringing some updates to you guys on that. That is one of the things that we're working on. So that's maybe a bit of positive news. See, I added it to the end.
That's a revenue source.
It is a revenue source. That's a true statement. I was just thinking the same thing. Makes up for some of the other, my bank statement. Um, so I'm sorry that it was really, really long, but that's what I have for you. So I don't think, did you have anything?
We're going to get questions out of Mr. Canal.
Any questions for the Treasurer?
No very detailed, not great news, but all news we needed to hear.
And I'd just like for you guys to know in advance before I come to you and say, hey, by the way, we're going to have to pay something else. So. Alright, thank you gentlemen.
Okay, thank you. Enjoy the rest.
Thank you, Greg.
Okay, that brings us to prosecuting attorney pending issues, some of which may qualify for executive session. Mr. Prosecutor, are you, do you have anything in open session first before we?
I, I do not.
Okay.
So then I will announce executive session. How much time do you want to start with, Mr. Canal?
Half an hour.
Half an hour? It's not, it's not good news. Yeah. Okay.
It's a good day. Got on on vacation.
Well, we can start with twenty minutes wouldn't be optimal.
Let's start with twenty minutes and extend when we need to. We will go into executive session in courts with R C W forty two point three zero point one one zero. Pren win, pren I.
Pren win, pren I for, um, pending, uh, litigation for twenty minutes, starting here in a second. I will ask folks on the Zoom to please take yourself off. We have no more action items today. I don't anticipate us having any other, um, business, uh, other than to adjourn until eight thirty on Thursday. But you're welcome to check back in in twenty minutes if you wish. Leave myself.
Hey, Lee, make sure you don't close it out or I'm gone.
Yes, sir.
And don't kick me off.
Appreciate the reminder.
I think everything is. Take it all and check it.
Did, oh, did you ever hit the record button today? I never, it never came across saying this meeting is being recorded.
It is being recorded, sir.
No, well, I hope not anymore.
Well, it's still right now on because I'm I'm, uh, removing people.
You know, it's funny. Hey, we are back from executive session. Just for the record, we did, we started with twenty, we extended ten minutes and then another five minutes. Do we have any other? Yes, go ahead.
Mister Chairman, I would, I would happily declare or, uh, move that we adjourn.
Before we do that, um, I had Lee send you guys a copy of the final healthcare study. Um, at some point, we need to have some discussion on what are our end goals for this. Could it, is it actually possible, uh, in where we want to go from here to get in front of a situation that may or may not be ever getting addressed?
Okay.
That's really interesting. Was that a second of my motion?
Yeah, no, it wasn't, not yet. Can we also, uh, because we did not have a chance to. We, Dan and I had a maybe a during board pending on the request for the dollars for the Golddale Reds project. Uh, and I had, I don't know if you, because I, you were kind of in and out at that point, Jake, as far as at this point.
I I I heard it. Um, I'm gonna let you two lead on this one. I have, uh, some fairly strong opinions on some of the, what I was seeing in the Reds project. While I'm in favor of it, um, I wanted it a little more fleshed out. I sent an email about, I need more information before I'm gonna vote on spending this kind of money on, on something that, uh, to be brutally honest, some of this is kind of a pipe dream. Um, I mean, like with with regards to the hydrogen and all this, like, it sounds amazing, but I need, I would need very good pro forma numbers before I want to spend a ton of money on these kind of things. And and I one hundred percent respect Gina and where she's coming from and the fact that she got the dollars, and I want to see those move forward. Um, but I don't want to be involved in a whoops.
Right, and I will say from my conversation, and then I I spoke with, um, McCad and then also with, you know, one of the most important things, like this is, that's only one part of the, the, one of the projects that would be highlighted. Uh, thing that was really important to me is that I don't want any things that are just, you know, pie in the sky things. Looks like I don't want to see them wasting their time, trying to flesh out these things that there's no hope of ever, ever coming. And they're, you know, don't waste our time. And so the consensus of everybody, Lisa, I've talked to, is that only product, notwithstanding the hydrogen thing, because that is part of Gina, the Representative Mossbrokers thing. Uh, notwithstanding that, the only things that would be likely to be included are gonna be things that are either already on our sets list, projects that are already pretty much fleshed out. We've got good numbers on stuff that we could, we could get behind. Not a general call out to the community, what's every project you ever thought of, but, uh, that's what.
Okay.
Understanding is, I didn't, uh.
I I would agree.
May have a different.
It's mainly stuff already.
I can't. Oh, sorry, sorry, Dan. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, you're good. It's mostly stuff already on our list. Um, there's a few other things like that that was brought up for a, a Main Street revitalization that they already have. The numbers worked out at the city level from a couple of years ago. If the city wanted to throw that on. Uh, but, um, yeah, no, this is just money to, I guess I would say flush out some of the things that are already there and get all the documents in place to make a presentation for the things that are already on the list for the most part.
I am, I am totally in favor of that. You know, I I I talked with Richard and about it and, you know, where where they were looking to go. I'm, as long as it's on the sad list and and that's all fine, I'm good with that. Um, it's just some of the pie in the sky that that was, it was concerning to me. And it's like, we want this. Well, you also ran, you know, a levy in order to do some of these things, and the people thought you you might not need this right now. So I didn't want to do it in a different way when the people said one thing. That's, that's the only question I I kind of had on it. But honestly, I didn't get very deep into it. I missed a phone call from Leslie, and that's why I said I will defer to you gentlemen on what you think here.
Yeah, it's a pretty big list. If we can get two of the items out of the twelve, I would be happy.
Yeah, and basically what we're underwriting the cost of is the consultant to put the whole project together. And I would rather it be done professionally and done well, because my biggest concern frankly is that they do a crappy job of it. And then that reflects on, you know, that we have a bad reputation with all these funders. You know, they're gonna bring them all to town. We're gonna do. And then if it's like, if it, it either better go really well or we shouldn't even do it. And if they can't, I, and so this gives me some comfort that we're buying expertise.
Right, I want to say the number was like thirty seven thousand or thirty seven five or something.
I think the request was thirty five.
But but we're gonna need a supplemental for this, correct?
No, we have dollars in the Community Development Fund.
Do it require a project?
Is that what, oh, uh, did we look into it on whether we're, you're gonna use Community Development Fund or use the, uh, the dollars from the renewable energy landfill stuff? Did did Lee check, flush that out?
I did. Possibly part of it would qualify. That would require an application uh, to the landfill gas improvement committee. Uh, economic development, I guess, took the initiative to go ahead and vet it through the K C P E D A. And that's the route that they were going.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that there was so many. Because some of them wouldn't qualify in their natural gas.
Right, was the thought anyway, and that just the timeframe. Eleven weeks before the, uh, the consultant can go to work and check. Even do it.
Yeah. So, all right.
But I'm. Whatever you guys think. I I'm down. Um, do we need to make a motion to spend the dollars today or do we want to do that next week? Where are we at?
I would make the motion today so they know.
Yeah.
And then.
You have a key tomorrow.
I'll be on the freeway, but.
Okay, so so my motion dies of a second. Uh, we're, we're still in open session. Dan's making the motion is what I heard.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we use the case of P E D A dollars, thirty five thousand.
Up to.
Up to thirty five thousand to, uh, help fund the the Reds.
I will second the motion.
Okay, a motion in a second to obligate up to thirty five thousand dollars from the community fund, uh, to support that, to support the project. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Now I. Can I move to adjourn before we spend any more money?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Have a motion in a second to adjourn the regular meeting. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
All right.
Aye. And.
Aye. Thank you, guys. Sorry, sorry if you heard that noise on my side as well, but, uh, I'm glad I wasn't there listening to whatever that, uh, Huey was above you guys.